...on a more seismically sound structure.
But will the pump be able to reach all the way over to this knuckle?
It does.
Since the $488 million replacement project started, Allen says the city has taken great strides to increase diversity on the design team.
When I started the project, I was the only woman on the team. And as we've been filling positions, and I look for the best person to fill the position, it's been a woman in many cases. So a lot of our leadership roles on the project are filled by women.
Allen graduated from UCLA with a degree in civil engineering. After 27 years with the city, she now helps recruit and mentor other women.
She's a role model to me in a way because I see how she carries herself as a female engineer in a male-dominated industry. And I just, I look up to her and I, you know, I learn a lot from her, just how she handles herself.
Julie has been a fantastic mentor, especially to me personally. I work very closely with her every single day. And just the wealth of knowledge that she has and the leadership that she brings to the project from all her past projects, it's really empowering.
The project has created hundreds of jobs. And once it's complete, there will be a park here and more green space for this community.
We're going to be installing 12 acres of new park space that spans all the way from what you see over here on the north side of the bridge, all the way to the 101 freeway. This is a very parkour community. And the viaduct structure itself was very, very beloved to the community before. And this new one is going to be an iconic structure, not only for this neighborhood, but for all of Los Angeles.
The project is expected to be completed in 2022. Tribal dances, drums, and entertainment took center stage as hundreds of people gathered at Grand Park to honor Native American culture and history.
Indigenous Peoples' Day in Los Angeles was created on August 30th of 2017, after a nearly two-year process. And that process began with a motion that I introduced to take a look, to do an evaluation, a study of what it would look like, or what it could look like, what the possibilities were of eliminating Columbus Day and taking a look at a way to honor Indigenous people.
Celebrating Columbus is really predicated on the mythology that he discovered a whole entire hemisphere that was already populated by millions of Indigenous peoples. And so, we're here to set the record straight. Indigenous peoples have been here since the beginning of time, and we will continue to be here. We're members of beautiful resilient tribal nations all throughout the hemisphere.
This is one indicative of what can happen, you know, as far as history being changed. You know, people want to stand for right. They don't want to stand for wrong. They don't want to be remembered for doing something negative, something wrong, you know, something that would set electricity to certain families and generations and cultures.
Native American Indigenous Days is just the beginning. It's going to spread across the entire world. And it's going to be like Mardi Gras in New Orleans. It's going to be spread, the entire world is going to take place. And is everybody going to do the same thing we're doing here?
Some relief from City Council for renters facing no-fault evictions. A new pilot program helps cool city streets. And the pedestrian bridge in Silver Lake takes shape. All this in City B. The LA City Council unanimously adopted an emergency ordinance aimed at stopping no-fault evictions of apartment rental tenants until January 1st, when the new law that provides similar protections take effect. In Atwater Village, the Steel Trust superstructure of the Red Card Pedestrian Bridge arrived in LA this week and installed. The bridge will connect the communities of Atwater Village and Silver Lake across the LA River. Mayor Eric Garcetti has announced a pilot program that combines cool pavement with shade canopies and trees to help decrease the temperatures on streets and walkways. It's a Hollywood institution that has trained many of today's best-known comedians and funny movie stars. And now, Councilmember Paul Coretts is helping the Groundlings celebrate their 45th birthday. Anna Marcos takes a look.
Try to control the weird faces.
Forty-five years of funny stuff. And now, the Groundlings Theater and School, a homegrown Hollywood landmark, is getting honored on its birthday by the city and Councilmember Paul Coretts.
I guess it's ironic that I'm doing this because I have no sense of humor.
I was kicked out of a serious acting class and told that all I wanted to do was make people laugh.
So you were too funny for acting?
I was too, yes. I was told I was too funny. But when I got to the Groundlings, it's like a family. I found my funny home.
And to think, these guys were just a group of actors back in 1974 who wanted to work on their craft. So they held a workshop. That turned into community performances, which led to jobs on shows like Saturday Night Live. And now, the Groundlings is the go-to place when you want funny actors in Hollywood.
I don't think any of us imagined SNL would go on for 45 years. I don't think anybody ever imagined that the Groundlings would be here after 45 years. We were just a bunch of goofballs, you know?
Since 1974, the Groundlings Theater and School has been the foremost comedy training ground in Hollywood and the springboard for countless careers, including comic geniuses from film and television.
Think Melissa McCarthy, Kristen Wiig, Lisa Kudrow, Will Ferrell, Adam Sandler, John Lovitz. Just a few superstars like that. But even more than the superstars, the Groundlings have brought laughter and good times to many, even our so-called humorless councilmember, Paul Coretts.
I went on my second date with my wife, Gail, to the Groundlings. And we had such a great time laughing together that I think that really started a relationship that has lasted 35 years. And so, I credit the Groundlings.
What is it that you think makes you funny?
Nothing, nothing. And I interrupt people.
So you're not funny?
Not in the slightest.
And you're in the Groundlings?
Yes, I am.
Put that out for me.
I don't know. Mistakes are made constantly in life.
But this is no mistake. Being funny is serious business.
Not that I didn't have fun, but I think I truly took it as I was like, this is like my master's program. And so, I took it, I think, very serious.
The Groundlings have also become a community presence with classes for the general public, as well as training for corporations like Google and Disney.
And does that help business?
Yes, it helps business. It helps politics. It helps business. It helps families. It helps relationships.
Yes and is the foundation of improv. When we build on each other's ideas, anything is possible.
Apparently, everything in life goes down easier with a little yes-anding and a little laughter. Happy birthday, Groundlings.
For more information on the school or the theater company, visit groundlings.com. The original farmer's market at Third and Fairfax brought everyone together for a good old-fashioned country fair, complete with pig races and pie-eating contests.
We are having our fall festival. It's an event the farmer's market has been hosting since 1934. And it's basically a county fair in the heart of a big city.
We're going on the bell this time. Let's just put the bell. There's the bell. Ed, here's talk around. Today, Bob won our first show. So he's out here at the little winner's circle doing photos.
Right now, we have the miners on behind us, and they've been a favorite. They are here every year. We have bands throughout the weekend.
I think it's great for kids. There's not a lot to do in this area with kids. And it was free, which is amazing.
It's nice to bring the kids out. They love petting the animals. And it's just a perfect Saturday to spend time with the family.
Say hi.
Hi. My mom lives across the street. We came to visit her, and she told me there was an amazing fair at the Grove. So we came to walk around. What do you like the most so far that you saw?
Uh, the pig race.
All right, Judge, let's make it official. First place, second. I grew up around animals, and I think everybody should have the opportunity to be around them. They're very special creatures.
I think the reason why farmer's market has endured 485 years is it really is a small village in the middle of the city. You know, most of our businesses are family-owned and operated. People come to farmer's market and they feel at home. You know, LA is a big city, so it's nice when you have a place you can just call home.
Enjoy an all-access pass to multiple art venues at Grand Park, listen to some great music at a benefit concert, and help celebrate the opening of Metro's Blue Line. All this and things to do. Enjoy a pass to all things artistic throughout Grand Avenue during their all-access celebration. This annual arts event will offer workshops and activities throughout the Grand Park downtown LA area. Enjoy festivities including a scavenger hunt, a gallery talk at the Broad, or attend an LA Opera performance at the Dorothy Chandler Pavilion. There is free admission to Moca and much more. The Grand Avenue Arts All-Access drops Saturday, November 2nd. For details, visit grandavenuearts.org. Don't miss the Silver Lake Conservatory of Music's annual benefit. This highly anticipated evening is the biggest fundraiser for the conservatory, which brings dynamic music education to the people of LA. The evening will be hosted by comedian Marc Maron with musical acts including Red Hot Chili Peppers. The Silver Lake Conservatory of Music benefit happens Saturday, November 2nd, beginning at 6:00 PM. Learn more at silverlakeconservatory.org. Going Blue just got more exciting. Join Metro LA for Blue Line Celebration, the latest opening of the Blue Metro A-line. The opening will be accompanied by entertainment from local performers, food, community booths, and special giveaways. So don't miss out on the Blue Line Celebration, happening Saturday, November 2nd, from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM at The Block, located at 750 West 7th Street. For more info, visit metro.net. And that's a look at some things to do. That's it for this edition. I'm Yana Kay. From all of us here at LA This Week, thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityb.org. We're also on Facebook, Twitter, and YouTube. See you next time for more of LA This Week.
Hi, I'm Daniel Kim with the City of Los Angeles Department of Aging. We're here to improve the quality of life, independence, health, and dignity of the older adults and family caregivers who live in our city. We have programs and services that cover a wide variety of issues facing both older adults and caregivers. Many of our direct services are provided through our local multipurpose senior centers. Our centers have access to care management, nutrition services, transportation, evidence-based programs, and more. They're also a great place for you to connect with others in your own community. If you don't know where to start, our helpful information and assistance staff are here to help. We're able to connect you to your local center and other resources like health insurance counseling, elder abuse resources, and even job training opportunities. Also, did you know that if you provide unpaid assistance to an older adult spouse, family member, neighbor, or friend, you're a family caregiver? We have resources for you through our department's family caregiver training and support. For more information and resources, you can call us at 213-482-7252, or simply dial 311. You can also check out our website at aging.lacity.org. Together, let's make Los Angeles the best age-friendly city in the world. Let's protect our wildlife together. Please, no smoking in Griffith Park.
Buenos dias, buenos dias. Si, todos, por favor, pueden tomar asiento. Hoy es mi cumpleaños de octubre. La bienvenida a... Se la actuaría, por favor, tenemos aquí... Está lista, por favor, la actuaría. Blumenfield, Bonin, Buscaín, o... Cervio, Harris, Dawson, Wizard, Coretts, Krikorian, Lee, Martinez, O'Farrell, Christ, Rodriguez, Rue, Wesson. Dos mismos presidentes aquí también en coro, señor presidente. Gracias. Primer orden de asuntos. Estamos aquí en negocios. Aprobar las actas. Señor Lee, hace la moción. La resolución obligatoria para la aprobación. Señorita Rodríguez, la moción. Y señor Buscaín, va a secundar. Continuando. Uno al catorce. Esos artículos que el Consejo Público se han llevado a cabo, y también el comité para artículos 11, 13, y 14, se han entregado y se han sido publicados y han circulado para que el Consejo lo pueda considerar. Y las actas número nueve. El Consejo de la Vecindad Tarzana entregó un informe acerca del impacto a la comunidad. Y número dos, entregaron un informe acerca del comité del uso de la tierra y de administración. Y ahora está a parte del Consejo Municipal, señor. Bueno, ¿tiene usted tarjetas? Vamos a votar. Artículo 12, por favor. Doce. Señor Buscaín, por favor. Las preguntas nueve, nueve. Y pasamos aquí para hacer los artículos. Y va a ser lista. Calculemos el voto. Doce a favor. Continuemos, por favor, la actuaría. Artículos 15 al 18. Son cesiones a puertas cerradas. Señor Presidente, número 18. Fue presupuesto el comité de finanzas. Y hay tarjetas que el Consejo debería tomar. Bueno, vamos a esperar ese con ese artículo. Botemos ahora en los artículos que permanecen. Sí, para cuatro, 15, y siete. Y se escucharon en el comité de finanzas. Usted pudiera, el Consejo puede leer ahora la indemnización que se propone. Así, señor Krikorian, ojalá, quiero ver si es el texto adecuado. Sí, cada uno de 15, 16, y 17 se concierne para parte presupuesto por finanzas para aprobarlo como lo ha hecho la ciudad. Son indemnizaciones rutinarias, y se puede encontrar en puertas cerradas. Bueno, lo que haremos es ahora es, por favor, tomemos el artículo 15 y 17 ahora. Los puede leer ahora, 15 y 17. Sí, señor. Artículo 15, en el caso de Annie Robach y la Ciudad de Los Ángeles, hay una recomendación de ampliar hasta $190,000 en una indemnización. Ahora, en el caso de 17, Ortega y la Ciudad de Los Ángeles, hay una recomendación de también gastar $430,000 como una indemnización. Gracias. Vamos a votar esos artículos. Pasemos lista. Cerremos la lista para votar. Calculen los votos. Doce a favor. Ahora, pasemos al 16. Artículo 16, señor, es en el caso de Manuel Brasi y la Ciudad de Los Ángeles. Ahora, hay una recomendación de ampliar, de gastar hasta $398,000 en indemnización, señor. Bueno, preparemos el voto para ese artículo. Ahora iniciemos el voto. Que se cierre el voto. Ahora calcular el voto. Once a favor. Uno, no. Eso nos lleva ahora a dónde? Eso nos lleva al artículo especial, comentario en general, presentaciones, señor. Bueno, muy bien. Muy bien, ahora vamos a hacer dos tarjetas de comentario público para Roberto Gasser, Gangsner, Tomás Fau. Pasen adelante, por favor. Y Jacqueline Richardson también. Sí, señor. Gracias. Mi disculpa, la quinta relación de público. Yo alquilo tres situaciones desde 20 años que iba ahí. Yo tuve al cortoplaza y largo plaza, poniendo la riqueza de cada persona en relación con ellos. Mi única fuente de recursos no es una casa. Como llame a este iglesia. Es mi hogar y abajo. Estos son mis compañeros de piso aquí. Es el único, es por el gobierno a mi casa. Me han escuchado a mí ahora también. También algo diferente en lo que es cuando son propietarios corporativos y personas individuos que quieren estar aquí en Los Ángeles. Si no se fuera por Airbnb, nuestros agentes hacen el trabajo, cosas aquí. Nos tuvimos aquí institución. Quizás ellos también deberían ser castigados sin gente como yo. Gracias. Señorita Richardson. Tomás está aquí. Señorita Richardson, hace como tres años atrás, se buscaba un apartamento nuevo. Y apreté lugares y dijeron, bueno, dos mil dólares, y también ahora no quiero ir aquí. Sentí muy mal acerca de eso. Y incluso la gente que gana buenos sueldos, a los actuarios, la gente no puede permitirse pagar dos mil dólares al mes. Es demasiado dinero. Otro tema, este tema de indigentes. En esta, no, bueno... Alguien llegó aquí ante ustedes y dijo que los indigentes en Los Ángeles no son ciudadanos norteamericanos. Algunos viven en otras naciones. Quizás dijeron tan rápido que no escucharon eso. No son ciudadanos norteamericanos.
No son ciudadanos norteamericanos y lo hicieron muy rápido.
Dani Ferro, por favor, pasa adelante. Comentario general.
Soy Dani Ferro, soy miembro de Pala. El consejo y la urbanización pone toda la queja a la falta de viviendas económicas. Dicen que la culpa es de unidades a corto plazo, pero están dejando que vengan mil y cinco unidades ahora, haces otros apartamentos, en apartamentos para hoteles pequeños. Siguen haciendo estudio del medio ambiente y cuarenta años de viviendas. Eso va a desplazar a ciento diez personas. Y ahora tenemos aquí el atrozo que ha hecho, están ahora poniendo la traspresión a los que son dueños, muchos ambiciones queremos ir con las personas, los víctimas del incendio, pero si poder tener aquí, no, tenemos nuestras manos atadas, por favor, atrás eso.
Gracias. Vamos a continuar comentario general ahora, quiero pasar al concejal Wesson, sus presentaciones. Señor Presidente, gracias, yo voy ahora al señor Kuritz, que empiece eso ahora para nosotros.
Gracias, concejal, presidente Wesson y gracias a los miembros. Estoy tan entusiasmada que el día de hoy, reconocido al servicio de las familias judías en Los Ángeles, son los tres verdaderos mentes de la comunidad. Estos tres individuos ahora son los sudineros, que siempre es importante, pero también su tiempo, dedicación, liderazgo, para poder ayudar a la comunidad más vulnerable, la comunidad que incluye a los servidores del holocausto y también tenemos a los mayores de edad, de vida pobreza, víctimas de la violencia en el hogar, para que ellos puedan tener los recursos a su alcance que necesitan transperadamente. A través del Centro de Servicios de los Judíos, tenemos aquí ahora, han puesto su último base de fierro para la familia de Gunther, es un centro que esos que van a poder obtener beneficios del programa de JSS, tendrán todos los servicios bajo un solo techo, igual como liderazgo, el personal. Estoy muy orgulloso que esta instalación, este lugar va a estar en el Distrito Cinco, en Beverly Fairfax y estoy viendo con anticipación de que tengamos ese lugar que proporcione ayuda y servicio para los que aquellos que más lo necesitan, Leila Casatina y David, por su liderazgo, para que este lugar increíble sea en realidad y más soltada a las familias judías de Los Ángeles. Y le doy ahora gracias a Nancy Walker por proporcionar un liderazgo para que el proyecto se pueda lograr también, muchas gracias.
Un aplauso muy fuerte.
Ahora, esta organización ha sido uno que ha estado ahora ya desde mil ochocientos cincuenta y cuatro es la organización más antigua, la Ciudad de Los Ángeles. Y servicio a los individuos de que y de la que se questraba también. Y cómo se puede hacer acerca de proporcionar servicios. Es para un amigo y una que apoyo a las familias judías. Tuve la oportunidad con señor Kuritz para que para que se pueda construirse el lugar que va a ser el doble en tamaño y dar la oportunidad a ella y lo que será en la comunidad. Tenemos que representar ahora para poder. Y hay un video ahora. Y fue tan fácil para tener ese video. Hasta, señor. Estamos bien. Una oportunidad para poder ir a un café Europa. Y un grupo de servidores del holocausto. Tuvimos una buena conversación y también el café maravilloso, no lo puedo creer que tenga que terminar ahora. Yo tuve tanto, tanto infierno, no se enfocan en el pasado, se enfocan en el futuro. Porque ahora y con eso. Es verdad que recostamos y personas que estuvieron ahora, que pasan mucho tiempo su vida para intentar ser que la cosa sea mejor para los demás. Y sería lo que que pudiera ayudar a todos. Señor Kuritz. Y tenemos aquí ahora, tenemos a Dina, Elaine, Eileen y David. Y David, yo entiendo de que usted va a ser el portavoz de este grupo. Damas y caballeros, por favor, démosles a esta organización de los servicios de las familias judías. Un gran aplauso. Gracias. Y luego ahora también tenemos otros invitados especiales con nosotros. David, voy a poner esa responsabilidad a usted ahora para que lo pueda hacer también, para asegurarse de que pueda presentar ustedes todas las personas quienes están aquí y han podido ayudarnos en crear estas instalaciones y también proporcionar servicios a la comunidad y le quiero decir al señor Kuritz y a su oficina de que yo siempre he disfrutado estar con ustedes este proyecto y realmente esto fue un labor de amor. Ahora a David, por favor.
Por parte de Dina, Eileen y yo, estoy muy contento en recibir este reconocimiento especial del Consejo Municipal de Los Ángeles, sobre todo nuestros amigos y aquí es un apoyo en el concejal Wesson y Kuritz. Como ya han escuchado, las familias judías, el servicio de las familias judías es una organización muy antigua y estamos muy orgullosos de la alianza con la ciudad que tenemos aquí. Las familias judías y la capacidad que tiene de continuar es cien por ciento. Ciento setenta y cinco años de servicio para la mayor en la comunidad, se va a hacer ahora en esta parte maravillosa, familias judías, servicios, Gunther y Centro, va a ser innovador y tan fuerte como la organización que está, la que la está creando, vamos a pedir a los servicios, ampliar y fortalecer nuestro alcance en Los Ángeles, la comunidad, consolidar aquí los programas y también nuestra eficiencia quiere decir que ahora más tiempo recursos y energía se van a poder dirigir donde tienen que estar y también apoyar y darle dignidad a las vidas de las personas, nuestros vecinos de la comunidad que tienen la necesidad. Este nuevo edificio le va a dar albergue, al café, servicios salud mentales, servicios de apoyo para lo que ha servido el holocausto, también terapia para las víctimas de violencia de parejas y también atención, y también ampliar el servicio para los mayores de edad y además una manera central para las familias judías. Muchos servicios que apoyan a la gente de ayudas del concejales el día de hoy. No podía ser posible sin nuestra alianza con la Ciudad de Los Ángeles. Apartamentos, la comunidad, el departamento de la comunidad y otras agencias. Estamos entusiasmados a trabajar cada uno de ustedes en proporcionar servicios a la persona más vulnerable de la comunidad. Entonces, tenemos aquí ahora, hemos llegado aquí algo importante que es el proyecto. El libro tenemos aquí ahora y la última voy a hacer aquí muy pronto. Es un momento que merece reconocimiento, a Eileen, Dina y yo, tenemos aquí ahora con todos ustedes nuestra alianza, la familia que estamos aquí el día de hoy, les voy a lograr. Los tres estamos aquí el día de hoy en los hombros de tantos. Ciento cuarenta familias que han donado, tenemos a familias de las familias judías y también el personal y por supuesto la alianza con todos ustedes. Gracias especiales para Nancy Walper y muchos de ustedes conocen quién nos ayudó con ese proyecto en la ciudad. Ningún edificio se puede construir sin el apoyo del local local, alcalde Garcetti, presidente Wesson, Kuritz y muchos de ustedes que están aquí en este lugar. Ser muchos lugares, también aquí han recibido aquí la Ciudad de Los Ángeles el desarrollo de comunidad para este proyecto, sobre todo para modernizar el centro de mayores. Ahora, la construcción de este centro no marca lo que es el principio ni tampoco lo que es el final. En cada generación, a la puerta de pata como decimos, prometemos continuar con la importancia de las familias judías y servicios para poder superar la pobreza, el hambre, la soledad y tener la falta de dignidad que mucha gente en la comunidad tiene que enfrentar todos los días. Gracias de nuevo a cada uno de ustedes por su apoyo, glacia, gracias Kuritz. Estamos aquí continuar ahora con este legado de servicio y dedicación a la Ciudad de Los Ángeles en las décadas más adelante, muchas gracias.
Señor, tenemos aquí miembro, señor Rue.
Presidente, gracias a los concejales ahora. A familias ahora, servicios aquí al ayuntamiento. Y también ahora, primero, pues ahora servicios en Los Ángeles, pero todos los servicios que ha proporcionado en la Ciudad del Condado de Los Ángeles ahí por años y décadas y les quiero decir ahora una explicación con Kuritz. Mientras las familias judías tiene toda la comunidad, ahora desde el número cuatro, estamos muy entusiasmados ahora, estamos muy bienvenidos, pero como han dicho muchos antes, ellos, servicios de familias judías solamente de las límites, ayuda con todo, se hace reciente de número cuatro, de s cinco o a Los Ángeles, ellos han dado servicios a todos, ya lo decía por todo lo que ustedes han hecho, estoy muy entusiasmado porque es central dentro de cuatro. Bienvenido a todos, gracias por todo lo que hacen, gracias señor Rue. También quiero decirles de que Eli White, él es el presidente del servicio de las familias judías, su recordé, número dos, han conocido también a Cooper y también son las parejas de Eileen y yo también es esta mañana que nos ayudan también, un aplauso para todos, muchas gracias por estar aquí.
Gracias señor presidente, gracias a ustedes señorita, señor. Señor, a la actuaría, por favor, noticia ahora. Sí señor presidente, para las actas, por ese artículo dieciséis, el concejal Wicks vota que no, esto no cambia el resultado señor. Sin ninguna objeción, ahora con esto pasamos al comentario general. Lynn Moses pasa adelante, por favor, tendrá un minuto para hablar después Eric Preven. Tenemos aquí a Lynn, está Lynn. Señor Preven, pasa adelante y luego Jabari Germain pasa adelante.
Buenos días, gracias señor, gracias. Mis comentarios son por parte de el centro Afiba en Los Ángeles. La comunidad negra no tiene ninguna clase de representación estas personas, señor Wesson, sobre todo señor Dawson, están ahí sentados, los evitan a nosotros. Atención, el centro de Afiba tiene un programa colectivo de salud, talleres de desarrollo económico, el centro comunitario judío es maravilloso, tienen buena presentación. Señor Dawson representa, representa a sí mismo, él es una persona que él es una enfermedad y una amenaza a la comunidad negra y lo que está haciendo es quiere destruir la aldea de Village. Él quiere destruir el centro de Afiba, mucha suerte, no habrá ningún vendedor blanco en Crenshaw Boulevard.
Señor Preven, Jabari pasa adelante, usted dice que señor Preven. Gracias, es Eric Preving hablando aquí en comentario general, que es inusual porque no puedo yo hablar acerca de lo que dijo señor Kuritz al final. Yo estoy preocupado porque el concejal Wesson ahora, basis dudos cuando él tiene reuniones donde no hay ningún artículo para que el público pueda hablar, menos en lo mínimo. Él está de manera clandestina poniendo información en el temario y yo creo, yo lo mencioné porque es muy inapropiado que durante la campaña Paul Kuritz está en el Distrito Cinco y David Rue, que fue, y ahí tiene más de un millón de dólares para su campaña, Krikorian, el toma de dinero de las compañías constructoras y Dawson también, él toma donaciones para su campaña y le digo algo, huele muy mal y le pregunté a este órgano que escuchen al pueblo, a la gente y dejen de estar escuchando a las compañías cooperativas que trabaja con el alcalde Airbnb de semana usada. Es increíble, es una puerta giratoria ahora. Usted, Eric pasa adelante. Un al tema del asunto de las puertas cerradas, gracias, no había anunciado usted la indemnización. ¿Tiene una? Ya se había hecho una indemnización, vamos a notificarlo. Bueno, esto es ahora, es una prohibición de pandillas. Y tienes aquí ahora, no votaron por lo que es el asunto soplares. Esto es una que la gente joven de color, por Los Ángeles, le tenían un toque de queda. Es increíble la actividad que tenían, la acción que la policía tomó y estos son demandas a largo plazo y yo no puedo tener en cuenta porque esto no van a ser lo que hacer, pero están haciendo algo, estampando los abogados, que otra manera, al que muestra mucho. Tenemos aquí una infestación de abogados y que el abogado, el concejal Kuritz, que es el líder aquí, él trabaja para Herb Wesson, esto necesita una limpieza de arriba a abajo, hay que limpiarlo. Como, hay que limpiar de que el público, gracias señor. Germain. Pasa adelante en comentario general.
y buenas tardes soy german y soy director de centro de afiba de los ángeles nuevamente le quiero dar las gracias al consejo por por tomar la acción de frenar la entrega de lo que fuera necesario la notificación de desalojamiento que recibimos dentro de afiba recibimos una notificación de desalojamiento por herrs tawson y ninguna razón en particular nos denunciaron pero sabemos que es una reboresalia por hablar en contra de los efectos de los cambios en el sur de los ángeles y crenshaw vamos a continuar y hablar a ver qué temas aquí tenemos aquí elementos y también hemos hecho ahora también aquí algunos impactos que estamos aquí en crenshaw vamos a continuar a hablar acerca de lo que es esos temas muchas gracias de nuevo por tener aquí esas acciones y apoyarnos en poder hablar gracias ahora vamos a el comentario general número doce seis habló se casó correct pero creo que bien número dos sí señor correct sus preguntas se han hecho ahora miembros pasamos aquí número doce ahora vamos a pasar señorita rodríguez perdón pasa adelante buenos días hola buenos días una pregunta acerca de si puede explicarse realmente cuál es cuál el mecanismo para poder solicitarnos de que tengamos que estemos aquí de hecho es la propiedad que va a ser ahí incluida esta revisión gracias yo creo que a lo que se podía hacer ahora en conjunto con el departamento de viviendas para asegurarnos de que quise utilizar como se puede utilizar la ordenanza y se puede hacer eh muy de cerca con el departamento de viviendas por lo tanto el departamento de viviendas será la agencia que se encargue de aplicar la ley para asegurarse de que tengamos hecho se pueden hacer y sean por dueños y no las unidades también que se puedan tener aquí dominan a un sistema que ahora bancamente no tenemos el mecanismo para poder aplicar la ley quiero que declaro de que estos h si se va a encargar de esa responsabilidad de manejar de ese proyecto se puede hacer en colaboración con los departamentos y utilizando su base de datos y sus unidades y también unidades que están se pueden manejar se puede hacer también ahora con respecto a terminar cómo se puede hacer no tenemos ahora mecanismo para poder asegurarnos de que de hecho no se puede pero en qué momento departamento va a poder llegar y con la política y el protocolo yo creo que lo que se puede hacer como parte de bueno mi preocupación es que está haciendo una política en el que tenemos aquí un mecanismo para mí es uno que me preocupa es como que todo lo demás que estamos haciendo si se puede hacer porque el problema no es con la gente que puede que la política en la gente que no está dispuesta con lo que estamos haciendo y por lo tanto colegas me preocupa a mí acerca tiene que ver con las unidades de rceo porque todo lo que estamos haciendo para proteger los intereses de unidades con alquiler estable me preocupa a mí nuevamente nunca es la gente que está dispuesta a participar es la gente de preocupa la gente que no están dispuestos a participar de manera honorable voy a agregar algo más entiendo de que esta acción día de hoy que ha pasado no es es una indicación para que hable con lo que sí está bien bueno yo quiero incluir un reporte de neotradillas de que vamos a pedir cuál se puede hacer la acción cómo va a ser para entrar la compañía bien gracias voy a secundar ese informe señor lee ese comité pedimos ahora el departamento que pueda ver las consecuencias si yo entiendo y si yo soy propietario tengo una segunda unidad la segunda unidad automáticamente hace que ambas unidades aunque yo pueda hacerlo estoy reciente y y te voy a hacer terminar ahora se puede hacer entiendo de que puede estar ahora para arreglarlo tenemos aquí ahora también ahora y yo puedo al mercado yo lo que quiero aquí es aquilar es un cuarto de mi residencia principal bueno una unidad puede ser para poder hacer que también para poder hacerlo y también la ordenanza puede ser que también ahora yo entiendo de que tiene se ha sido enmendado para que se pueda aplicar por toda la ciudad señor un aplauso vamos a seguir por el artículo ahora señor sedio bueno en respuesta a mis colegas señor lee es que lo que es eso es una ficción y de hecho no es es un rceo es un especial edificio en particular que está aquí y hemos ahora que sea un lo que se puede hacer que hemos hecho algo legal nada más es emociona ahora que se puede hacer aquí también con respecto al los dueños pero hay más trabajo que hacer el hecho es que aún se puede ser muy exitoso en poder hacerlo en hacer una gran parte de personas que están que le está costando sobrevivir aplauso también aquí y después esa unidad que está agregando uno al mercado ese quita el mercado y son esto es ficción esto no es la realidad cuando hemos visto no solamente decenas pero una gran parte de la población de las personas que están están luchando y a la realidad de la parte demográfica y población y parejas regresan hay muchos factores que impactan a las viviendas y las vecindades la comunidad y ahora ponemos aquí aquí de la persona que está aquí que explota las circunstancias no es lo mismo ahora hace falta algo nuevo hace falta que la discreción también y también ahora poder diseñar una política que incluye todas las realidades no solamente aquellos esos que amenazan el la industria de hoteles eso es puede ser termina ahora no es el único valor importante es el primer paso de acuerdo de que por toda la ciudad pero yo creo que hace falta continuar hacia adelante y también cómo buscar cómo poder continuar con eso eso nuevo que se ha podido hacer esperen que nos aplausos si vamos a continuar con artículo señor moning gracias esta conversación no sé si todo el mundo entiende lo que estamos haciendo señor boomfield ha hecho la moción yo creo que le va a explicar ahora la intención es quiero entender cómo es que usted puede interpretar esto algo una aplicación específica que espero que le pueda ayudar es una propiedad de que es un son cuatro unidades y se fue construido en 62 y 32 ahora estoy un comidito esta moción todas las cuatro unidades están fuera de la ordenanza yo entiendo que que solamente es la unidad que se los bañó señor boomfield yo quería explicar siempre que estamos hablado acerca del comité cuando hablamos de lo que es el problema de piloto y gracias no hay otro más pasemos aquí hablamos la lista cerramos la lista y calculemos el voto catorce a favor aprobado gracias señor crecorian en el punto de la sesión a puertas cerradas hemos quitado el comité si una recomendación que se puede hacer el siguiente ahora que se puede hacer también aquí yo creo que es lo que se revisó aquí podemos considerarlo aquí la recomendación y se puede hacer aquí en la sesión abierta artículo dieciocho está bien vamos a continuar ahora con en sesión por las cerradas vamos a continuar en el escritorio viene ahora vamos a pasar se hacemos un descanso con el regular y pasamos a la reunión especial pasamos a estar lista por favor la reunión especial boomfield bonnie busca y no se dio herrs tawson we start carres cricorian lee martínez ofare el price rodríguez ru wesson quince miembros y hay un coro presidente gracias ahora con eso pasamos a comentario público sí vamos a leer el artículo ahora diecinueve y veinte ni que ver que sea público no sean voy a llevar a cabo diez votos se requieren para considerarlo señor y hay tarjetas en diecinueve y también el veinte diecinueve ahora bacon bayless sherry severe cuando conozcas nombre por favor pasen adelante el podio bacon sherry severe digan bayless beverly roberts señor bayless sí gracias buenos días yo soy señor daniel bayless y le digo de que es de con seis ya tienes para la economía justa y nosotros ahora tenemos aquí una clínica donde tenemos aquí prevención a quinientas personas de bajo recursos cada año y y las personas aquí en la comunidad son más aquí para querer quiere decir que ellos están aquí ahora más necesidades básicas para ir sus familias por favor hace falta que haya orden en la cámara es una audiencia pública en el público en este artículo por favor si se levanta hágalo poco a poco sin hacer ruido gracias siga muchas las personas que están aquí en nuestros votos aquí están son muy vulnerables a que ser incrementados del alquiler muchas veces ahora o voy a seguir la comunidad por lo tanto por tanto por parte de los los votantes seis apoya un amparo de emergencia para los alquileres y que lo hagan tan rápido sea posible para que se ponga en efecto hacerse de que la gente quiera proporcionar apoyo a muchos incluyendo sea posible incluyendo lo que se ven lo que reciben compone de sección ocho después sigue beverly roberts hola hola quiero decir gracias a todos por ser rápido con la conmemoratorio pero también yo soy inclinado a sección ocho y también ahora en lo que es este visto que estoy escribiendo para el amparo va a incluir sección ocho el abagado municipal hola a todos gritalos a todos bueno tan rápido en el evento porque ahora dos mil años yo nunca he visto una visión tan rápido el tema del alquiler es pero está aquí ahora para hablar sección ocho yo también y tengo propiedades hay continuar en esa orden rápida muy rápido porque yo siento que ahora lo que se ha hecho ahora siete años conmigo y nunca le faltó un pago y se puede hacer aquí también ahora y lo que yo digo es que hay que hacerlo rápido rápido porque yo no conozco nadie acercado que es mi gente así les hace también ahora a esa gente y la otra hora es tienen que hacerlo excedente y rápido entienden me entienden buenos días señor muchas gracias ahora a mí se me rompe el corazón ver cómo llegar a este edificio y hay que llegar y por otras personas inteligentes para entrar al edificio he ido aquí toda mi vida amo la gente de los ángeles amo a mi gente amo a toda la gente pero ustedes son responsables porque la gente duerme en la calle todos estos artículos que ustedes quieren votar prestaciones son muy bonitas pero ustedes son responsables herb wesson en sus diez años aquí en marquis tawson ahora quiere desalojar a todos él no representa a nosotros eric pre pasa adelante y luego siria marroquí gracias eric prening de studio city y evidentemente este gran especial que yo le agradezco son veinticuatro horas de certificación pero cuando el público se le da solamente de cuatro horas de certificación como él sabe se lee en comentario por en todos los artículos que están en el temario por el cual que tenemos aquí un tema de etiquetas ahora porque por lo cual que tenemos aquí un tema de etiquetas ahora porque es que hay tantos directrices confusas en el temario ahora pasamos a la parte sección 8 están votando y a través de varios propietarios hay es una gran crisis y quiero enfatizar que tenemos una cantidad de individuos que están aquí haciendo fila para sección 8 qué clase de locura y agradezco también como he dicho la sesión para hablar acerca de los artículos el número 18 qué locura es esta porque se hace tanto tiempo o porque es que estas estas demandas de represalias y soplones pase Silvia Wayne pasa adelante por favor hola buenos días soy Silvia marroquí yo soy ahora que soy la comunidad con Sage y yo he visto muchas de las personas que vienen aquí a nuestras puertas y yo veo que vienen aquí en las calles y yo les digo a las personas de que estar aquí en la comunidad y yo sé que es un peso el alquiler es real está ahí hay gente que ahora han perdido sus hogares seis meses y alquilan de hoteles y no pueden encontrar nada que sea asequible tenemos personas que se están muriendo en las calles hay personas que no pueden pagar con maída van comen ramen comen sopa día y noche una un plato al día porque no pueden pagarlo hay personas tiene cinco miembros de su familia trabajando tiempo completo y todavía no pueden pagar el alquiler por lo tanto gracias por aprobar esa ley Wayne pasa adelante hola yo soy la persona es sí que el artículo lo que hace ahora y también sobre todo Gil los había tres millones dólares ese regalo hasta que lo llamé a su oficina pero me fue a los temas hay tres millones de dólares en cuestión te ve mi tiempo te ve mi tiempo te ve mi tiempo diez segundos más sweet ahora hay tres millones dólares aquí en un regalo de tres millones yo no sabía cerca de esto usted mandaron después de Gil no lo pasó el comité de viviendas él tiene que regalar ahora como ocho horas después así es y por eso es que no podemos confiar de her pero siempre confío una gracias pasa adelante Antonio Ramírez Antonio está aquí pasa adelante tres millones de dólares me rompe el corazón tres millones de dólares me rompe mi corazón señor Herman siga 20227519200 por favor pero de justicia sur de California la viviendas ahora se está destruido es un aviso corto plazo de que el departamento hasta las horas para poder una autoridad para asignar los fondos para emergencias me rompe el corazón yo no quiero felicitarlos ahora pero sí como algo que también con mis brazos y mi boca tan grande según cuenta 2173 por parte del público y no grita el micrófono señor aquí está el micrófono si algo va a ser la gente contar su tiempo gracias después Antonia Greenspan pasa adelante gracias damas y caballeros estamos viendo el departamento de justicia es Trump que yo admiro que no darle tres millones o así de fondos a la ciudad de Los Ángeles y el condado nosotros que somos indigentes a las calles tenemos no nos han dado seguridad pública yo no puedo creer como la gente aquí sobre todo la gente está aquí Buscaíno y todas las demócratas de sus sucios que están aquí ahora no han podido ayudarnos en lo que se puede hacer aquí también ahora atacados fueron negros y mojados y lesbianas y gordos y transvestis cuando va a haber seguridad pública cuando empieza Beverly Hills en la república tres millones dólares tres millones de seguridad pública señores Ramírez fuera de tema vuelva a ser el tema de nuevo no funciona lo que vamos aquí tenemos algo permanente es una pérdida de fraude y abuso maltrato la pena tener que estar aquí ahora estar en seguridad pública tienes una prioridad pública y se puede tratar y luego la haciendo pero también a los después voy a seguir ahora ahora pasa adelante Greenspan quiere pasar Greenspan alguien más Greenspan ahora tenemos aquí a miembros quien más sigue en la lista de para hablar comentario público se clausura se va a clausurar señor Martínez señor presidente para las actas hay una moción ahora que se ha puesto y ahora por parte de los concejales número 19 y la recomendación es 13a el departamento tienen que ahora 43 en lugar de 74 señor gracias Martínez quiere hablar usted acerca de qué tema señor Sacks no estaba estar en artículo 19 bueno ahora el 20 señor Martínez señor Sacks señor Sacks haz la reunión última advertencia no ve esa reunión ahora más al sargento por favor en la cámara silencio en la cámara gracias señor Martínez señor presidente gracias y colegas por su ayuda en crear lo que es una una pausa a la brecha porque estamos aquí lo que es tenemos sin propietarios como los por parte A B 1422 que no pasa en efecto hasta enero el día de uno yo creo que A B 4822 en la parte es una buena ley desafortunadamente los que tenía que haber pensado en efecto el día que el gobierno lo firmaba la ley que era el 8 de octubre y ahora lo que está sucediendo es que en los propietarios están inquietando el alquiler y se ven ahora en una situación en la cual pueden perder sus viviendas en resultado a eso la semana pasada probamos una prohibición en ningún alojamiento que el señor O'Farrell y señor Price pero tenemos también queremos aquí otras personas que tenemos ayuda queremos ayudar también ahora yo le pedí a la abogada municipal si alguna manera de que se puede hacer aquí en la y para poder una zona sin alquiler y también desafortunadamente la respuesta fue que no pero eso no debería de tenernos a las personas y también la emergencia hay que hacer más aquí también aquí si nos ayuda con eso al mismo cuando hay una emergencia la ciudad de Los Ángeles despoertos incendios o un terremoto una inundación normalmente nosotros corremos deprisa y tenemos albergue de emergencia para la gente que recibe ayuda cuando tenemos una emergencia como esta con el alquiler que la gente la gente les están están inflando y incrementando los alquileres sin 25 y 50% alquiler para mí eso es una emergencia emergencia de alquiler es una emergencia que ayudarles a todos por supuesto no trae nada hay que proteger a las personas que no pierdan sus hogares yo leí el artículo que dijo de Brittany Mejía en el vídeo de Los Ángeles el lunes y habló acerca de lo que es los trabajadores inmigrantes personas que trabajan en las casas en jardineros y van a la van hay trabajar porque están desesperados de trabajar porque está gente viven cheque a cheque y quiere decir que Los Ángeles en Vanadés en edificio con 25 unidades cada uno de esas familias recibieron una notificación de alojamiento y toda familia recibieron como obligar cómo van a duplicar el alquiler ahora porque quedarse ahí o se van a vivir esas familias ahí que están ahí van a acabar en las aceras en las calles o en sus vehículos o en un motel porque porque no van a poder pagar estos incrementos al alquiler que son tan salvajes y quieren yo conozco de 25 lugares esta es una emergencia es una emergencia de gente buena que hace lo mejor que puede solo para poder cumplir con sus facturas y poder vivir en sus apartamentos hay que hacer algo y me trate de que estamos aquí ahora es tenemos una ley de amparo de emergencia para los inquilinos y queremos ahora que tengamos un subsidio inmediatamente para que aquellos que se les incrementan el alquiler no serán desalojados queremos asegurarnos de que les ayudemos a ellos con esa brecha y si han tenido un alquiler incrementado queremos que estas personas no pierdan sus hogares este programa se va a iniciar inmediatamente hasta el 31 de diciembre asegurarse que esta gente se pueda quedar en sus hogares también quiero gracias a señor a señor Kerretz gracias señor por por haber por estar ser el coautor en la moción para asegurarse de que hubiera los fondos para que este programa se pueda lograr yo también las gracias señor al presidente de presupuesto y de finanzas gracias por ayudarnos también y ahora un artículo que se puede pasar de que la gente de Los Ángeles no se encuentre en la calle en resultado a esta ley que nos puede hacer también ahora incrementar alquiler porque lo tienen que hacer ahora y el día es lo que yo pido gracias señor Kerretz señor presidente señora Martínez gracias por esta moción yo creo que es muy apropiada la razón que hicimos en que hemos dado estos fondos era para los consejos y se puede hacer es porque cuando la gente es desalojada no habrá otra razón para que tengan un titular disponible para ellos y los mercados en la ciudad de Los Ángeles por tanto si la gente es desalojada a fuerza muchos de ellos acaban en la calle y esta situación es más una emergencia porque tienen un grupo de personas que tienen aquí ahora y han tenido su en su en realidad cuando uno le da tres no le da un incremento a una persona de 300% a su alquiler tiene que pagar mil dólares al mes ahora tiene que pagar cuatro mil dólares al mes de mil a cuatro mil dólares eso es es como desalojamiento y esto no permite a la gente que pueda tener la capacidad de defenderse a sí mismos y por eso es que con un par de millones de dólares esperemos de que esto nos pueda ayudar proporcionar alguna defensa a cines de personas y ayudarles a las personas con el alquiler hay que ayudarles hay que ayudarles y por eso es que es algo excelente para el fondo de ellos y hemos trabajado con ellos cómo se utilizar por en general y es la verdad perfecta para el lado de ese público porque hay tantas personas que van a acabar en las calles indigentes y no queremos ver esto no se puede permitir que se suceda esto y por eso muchas muchas gracias vida Martínez por lograr esto gracias a usted señor Cedia dejé yo ahora decirle como a favor de la política y sugerir de que esas sustancias de que es apropiado que utilizar el subsidio de alquiler y que se pueda permitir aquí también ahora como una emergencia y qué resultado sería de que tengamos aquí vamos a continuar ahora estos puntos dos puntos a esto al mantener estos resultados significativos para que esos inquilinos quienes tienen propietarios sin escrúpulos ahora también mantener el estatus quiere decir eso no estamos no hemos creado suficiente viviendas asequibles hay que hacerlo es igual también dando en cuenta que en general la mayoría de inquilinos no participan en esta actividad es en general pero sí hay suficiente propietarios y ejemplos entre la gente propietarios sí participan en esta actividad hemos hablado acerca de esto más antes que están trabajando y están trabajando en esas medidas como A B 482 otros buscando oportunidades aprovechándose de la gente para que puedan ellos explotar estas condiciones y circunstancias en la parte vulnerable yo quiero saber que por ejemplo cómo trabaja esto porque ya en nuestra experiencia en Hillside Vías no hemos podido tomar recursos de la ciudad para hacer subsidio al alquiler a los inquilinos no solamente ahora pero también los próximos diez años desafortunadamente el propietario y su abogado pensaron que podía ser mejor que pudieran apalancarnos explotar a la circunstancia y no es el trato también hemos hecho ahora algo parecido en la posada en mi distrito hemos salvado a 60 unidades de alquiler económico de viviendas económicas y también en Metro Boston en Chinatown donde hay una construcción enfrente a su subsidio al alquiler para 710 años y los incrementos por 10 años para cienes 123 unidades de viviendas económicas ahora frente a la calle tenemos residentes la mayoría son personas de tercera edad en Chinatown por lo tanto hay más que suficiente razón para poder apoyarse como emergencia yo quiero saber ahora que también es muy importante para nosotros promocionar las viviendas apoyar el desarrollo de las viviendas yo quiero que usted sepa en un caso particular hay un lugar que es las casitas en mi distrito que es el que se propone ahora va a tener 35 unidades de bajo recursos de viviendas esta crisis es la solución en total pero cada cantidad cada uno ayuda a la solución y hay que alevar a eso está es en 100 al final de 100 acres al lado del río y el país de la tierra para asegurarse de que esté limpio para que el agua pueda correr y esté limpia y también se oponen señor O'Farrell habla directamente estas personas se oponen a este proyecto agradezco su derecho de primera enmienda yo creo que usted como el campeón de los indigentes y sin hogar creo que deberían de pensar de nuevo su posición este es mi distrito y hay 35 unidades puede que sean más y este es el tipo de construcción que hace falta hacer para poder lidiar con este asunto para todo el tema y mientras esto es algo muy 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 a tiempo muy importante yo creo que mis colegas se lo dan gracias a eso es al final solamente se mantiene el estatus hasta el 31 de diciembre y tenemos que continuar como un consejo para asegurarnos de que todo hagamos todo lo que se puede hacer en la ciudad vamos a reconocer de que la viviendas es algo imperativo es nuestro deber es obligación y con esto ahora le pido a secundarios de su apoyo gracias señores señor Rue señor presidente le quiero decir ahora apoyo completo de este esta parte importante y estamos de acuerdo con concejal Martínez por ser campeón en este esfuerzo ahora como llevan toda esa memoratoria de que no hay ninguna excepción pero esta semana es igual sino más importante porque todos sabemos que están ahora es otro nombre por las desalojamiento y sabemos que la mitad sabemos que la mitad sabemos que la mitad de los residentes están sufriendo con sus alquileres muchos residentes no tienen el lujo de esperar hasta el día 1 de enero sienten ahora el impacto de ese alquiler muchos residentes sienten muchas dificultades con el ahora y muchos residentes tienen la posibilidad de que algunos meses se van a quedar sin casa por eso hay que actuar rápidamente a favor de los inquilinos hacer todo lo que sea posible para que los inquilinos mantengan sus casas estoy tan contento en ver que este programa ahora concejal Martínez y también mis colegas míos y les doy todo mi apoyo urgentemente a esto señor Rue gracias señor Blumenfield a favor de esto y hasta adelante también quiero dar en cuenta de que las personas que escuchen esto que sepan que bajo la ley estatal de aquí hasta adelante el propietario no le puede subir su alquiler más de 10% bajo la ley estatal tienen que ir sale con 60 días por escrito si es que lleguen a subir alquiler antes el día 1 de enero si hay alguna persona de cualquier lugar que está padeciendo por un propietario que quiere subir al alquiler no lo pueden hacer empezando el día de hoy no se lo pueden subir el día después del día de hoy no le pueden subir alquiler qué quiere decir ahora es que aquí estamos lo que queremos otro es cómo lidiar con los propietarios sin escrúpulos que han querido hacer cosas así y tenemos que hacerlo contra ellos y es triste me molesta porque hay propietarios escrúpulos que van a recibir más dinero y los que no lo hicieron no lo van a recibir pero todo hasta el día 1 de enero entonces la realidad
y los que no lo hicieron no lo van a recibir, pero todo hasta el día 1 de enero, entonces la realidad es que tenemos que hacer algo porque tenemos que la gente se siga en sus hogares y desafortunadamente los malos actores van a tener, van a ser pagados, lo que es realmente por eso, por eso tenemos estas medidas ahora, pero no es correcto. Hay que continuar con eso. Hacemos esto para ayudar a los que queremos ayudar a las personas. Eso es lo que da vergüenza cuando los propietarios quieren subir los alquileres, esta manera tan violenta porque lo pueden hacer. Pero esto, esto se vuelve a resetear en enero menos mal, el día 1 de enero ya empieza de nuevo bajo la ley estatal. Para que tuviéramos esta brecha, pero aquí estamos ahora y esta medida va a ayudarnos ahora para que todos sigan en sus hogares. Gracias por estar aquí y yo os voto a favor. Señor O'Ferrall.
Yo quiero también hablar acerca del apoyo de esto, es, es una gran campaña iniciativa para poder los inquilinos que están aquí ahora, que es poco en el contexto actual, de sienes de, miles de unidades pero también no están impactados de manera grande aquí ahora, esto va a ayudar a muchas familias. Se puede hacer aquí también los últimos meses para que en enero esas, esos alquileres se puedan regresar de nuevo a lo que estaban en marses, en marzo más el 5% que es hasta el 14% del show y también otro 4% que se permite en la opción según CPI ahora. Por lo menos hemos podido ver este tema como consejo y es importante, es una gran parte que nos va a ayudar a ese universo con inquilinos que están aquí ahora, tantos, de la negativa afectados por esto, por eso que hemos hablado acerca de esto. Y señor Cedillo como usted ya usted ya pasó, será que no tiene que ver con eso completamente, yo tengo que contestar ahora. Su personal también estuvo ahí que le preguntas y aunque eso es parte de, el inicio de conversación. Así lo siento también entonces para que usted se ponga aquí y decir y me cuece a mí cuando un mes atrás usted estuvo aquí y dijo que se cayó en una vivienda permanente en mi distrito en un lugar que estaba sin utilizar. Mantenga seguramente que usted se ponga a hacer alguna acusación en público. Usted que esté en contexto, mi recomendación. Ahora con esto. El 19 ahora ha circulado, vamos aquí ahora en el 19. Va a ser abrir la lista, cerremos la lista, acuélemos el voto. Quince a favor aprobado, así como amendado, gracias. Ahora pasemos a, a lo que está, se continúa aquí. Aprobado. Artículo número 20, artículo número 20, está el otro nosotros ahora estamos aquí oradores. Lynn Moses, por favor pasa adelante Lynn Moses, artículo 20. Después fue Eric Previn. Señor Moses, ¿está aquí en la cámara? No lo veo. Señor Antonio Ramírez pasa adelante. Herman pasa adelante. Va a tener un minuto para poder acercar el número 20. Antonia, si aquí pasa adelante Antonia. Eric Previn por parte de servicios aquí, señor O'Ferrall, su distrito, está el micrófono encendido, sí. No hay micrófono. Voy a me dar tiempo ahora, siga, siga, siga. Cómo se puede hacer. Deje decirle algo de que cuando uno tiene esta visión, pero cuando está en una reunión especial y hay diferentes informaciones y otras, es, yo tuve la oportunidad de poder verlo pero le voy a decir una cosa, en mi distrito tuvimos un tema del uso de terrenos en el consejo municipal donde yo estaba muy preocupado acerca de que Coria estaba aquí ahora y nos representaba el proyecto, ahora pregunta es cómo ser 106 unidades de los cuales como están aquí pero hay estudios y hay más de 100 micrófonos ahí en un punto, entonces parece como que estaban ellos ahora están, pero le puedo decir de que y esto es ahora que se puede seguir, vamos también aquí conjunto este día que se pueden hacer y todo de repente tienen aquí que se puede hacer, quién sabe lo que es, solamente saben bien, gracias. Antonio Ramírez y luego sigue Herman. Esto es ahora también queda muy coraz, lo que sugerimos ahora es que usted va a tener estas mapas al final y lo van a pagar los votantes. Que todo pandillero mojado y negro y basura blanca y todos los, las personas que pueden tener mapas para que para la gente buena no acaba viviendo cerca o en delante alrededor de estatias criminales. Yo creo que ruta pública Consejal, escuela pública, Mónica Rodríguez es, no tiene importe lo que es también la Joyce Bucaino. La seguridad pública, Antonia, espere, Antonia. Señor Herman, usted. Está exhalado ahora, se lo digo varias veces. Dice, que es una baracuda, cosa de la pública, no sé, como yo vivo en la calle, yo no quiero a la gente aquí, que vive en la calle. La ciudad pública, ahora hace falta. No hay gente, yo estaré.
Porque hay subdefisión por parte de los subdividores de la falta de los contratos y bombas. William F, F, A, M, W, B, C, 71, 1065 para las actas, curpito A 375 en la calle Vine. Y sí, señor Cedillo tiene razón porque es que el campeón va en contra de esto de viviendas. Yo le digo por qué, yo le explico por qué, porque esos contratos que fueron mal asignados para proteger a la gente, el bienestar de la gente en C de uno. El lugar sigue con el artículo, artículo 21, redacción especial, charlo con el artículo 20, C de 313, 19 guión 12, 98 para las actas. Tenemos a Greenspan. Pase Wayne de adelante. Sí, vea estos, el distrito 13 y luego ya saben que Michel O'Ferrro está aquí sentado aquí también queriendo propiedad en logarsela aquí, que está aquí ahora como es algo que está malo esto. Michael Furlong, está bueno para lo que se ve, Furlong, sí señor. Él tuvo esto en 14 mil dólares del dinero que se puede ser ahora y eso está aquí, yo le echo culpa a todos. Cómo se puede ser que te haya hecho más dinero, que suponga la ciudad, vamos a hacer algo nuevo, una nueva tradición. Aquí el Cedillo va a llegar aquí también para las, de las cenizas, este maestro, yo digo espere ese artículo y que no sea aprobado señor Cedillo, empecemos aquí la ley civil. Arnold Sachs, que pasa adelante por favor, no la veo aquí. Ahora artículo 20, a los mismos artículo 20, pasa la lista, cierre la lista y votemos, calculamos el voto. Quince votos a favor aprobado, señor presidente, hay una petición para tener el 19, también 20 pasar junto sin ninguna objeción. Esa es la orden. Para, pues se levanta la sesión y regresamos de nuevo a la reunión regular. Señor presidente, tenemos aquí enmiendas para el número 19, A, B y C y han sido ya publicadas, si se coloca el consejo señor. Y tener artículo que están aquí ahora 19 también como 18 señor. Comentario público, artículo 9 Elizabeth Holly, pase adelante por favor. Siguiente por Nick Pro.
Buenos días Consejales, gracias por su tiempo día de hoy, gracias por Elizabeth Holly, compay que empujó su día de hoy, consejo de día de hoy. El último mensaje atrás, gracias a todos ustedes por la que se puede ser aquí ahora sobre todo lo que es Conseja Lesley por la explicación que ha dicho, de esas horas, tenemos aquí demostró una gran preocupación acerca de esta ordenanza y se puede trabajar aquí también aquí y lo que pasa aquí también ahora se requiere en la acción privada, por ser el acuerdo de ley que pueden llevar provocar a miles si es que tenemos el día de hoy o eso puede ser total. Y también imagínense cada vez que una persona pide un día libre, se puede aquí también ahora al personal o que se tenga llegar media hora tarde o más temprano, la ordenanza también nos tiene que documentar cada cambio y si lo hacen un error tendría que ser sujetos a una demanda. Entonces para defender a que se diga, aquí también 20 como 25 mil dólares por cada siete incluso, si no se hizo nada malo también es, después del 5 mil. Tenemos aquí también, ahora que esto se requiere aquí en la ley estatal, lo tenemos aquí ahora, gracias. Gracias. Nick Pro pasa adelante por favor. Hola Consejales, aquí es Nick Pro, aparte aquí lo que es de la cesión de California, traje siempre de que el consejo tome una apuntadiza general, sé que la política opciones dice inclusivo de lo que es, y también son la legación con la ordenanza. La BSA implementa recomendación que se hace, está una muestra de la política pero también como se puede hacer, no representa. Uy, se completó, el consejo tiene la opción de apoyar recursos y también se ven en su parte de California, esta decisión. Con todo respeto pedimos que pueda incluir una moción, una preferencia para poder hacerlo en hora de ordenanza, al incluir esto puede ser el esfuerzo, otros consejos, otras decisiones de ordenanzas. Ven en lo que el valor de lo que es un impacto real y evitar consecuencias inarrégulaciones que puede tener aquí también ahora ambos empleados y también empleados, muchas gracias por su consideración, gracias. Wayne Spinner pasa adelante por favor y luego Herman.
No vamos a traducir esto porque es demasiado vulgar lo que está diciendo. Hay mucha vulgaridad lo que está diciendo. Qué pasa Herman ahora, Greenspan pasa adelante. Justin Orkin pasa adelante.
Sí, yo estoy a favor, yo estoy apoyando esta política de la semana justa en colimito 54, 9, 5, 3, 1, 2, 6, 2, 0, 2 del AD. Discomunación para semana. Para poder apoyar la que se manda y Herman pues una liderazgo del BSA. Perdón, no vamos a traducir esto, es mucha vulgaridad, perdón, está diciendo palabrotas muy desagradables.
Señor Herman, por favor lea, hable, se le quita el tiempo, señor Herman, por favor. Empiece nuevo el 4 de octubre de 2019 porque bueno está fuera mucha vulgaridad, usted se le va, se le va, dice este, extensión al artículo. Vaya a la puerta señor Herman, vaya a la puerta, vaya a la puerta sergento, vaya a la puerta señor Herman, se tiene que ir. Ha sido demasiado su mal comportamiento y malas palabras y palabrotas, es demasiado la vulgaridad. Fuera señor Herman, adiós. Que en las actas indiquen que Herman sigue sentado, él tiene que irse. Señor Herman, usted se le ha ordenado que se vaya, por favor váyase de manera callada, con silencio. Le pido disculpas a los demás oradores, le pido disculpas por la váyase, este es mi primera enmienda, mi derecho, es mi derecho a quedarme. Váyase señor Herman, usted continuamente está interrumpiendo la reunión, es una gran falta de respeto continua con usted siempre. Y pido disculpas. Tenemos que esperar. No me toquen por favor, no me toquen, no me toque mi perro tampoco. No le hace daño, dejen a mi perro en paz. Señor, dejarme no grite, no grite señor, no, está caminando hacia atrás y sigue gritando. No toquen a mi perro, señor Orkin, su paciencia señor, perdón por la interrupción, gracias, un minuto. Trabajó aquí un target en el centro de Los Ángeles, quiero la acerca lo que es, es importante que tengamos que el empleador también target, que mantenga las actas de sus empleados y también ahora todo lo que se puede hacer también aquí, eso es lo mismo también para los empleadores que ellos también tienen que hacer, es necesario que las actas para poder encontrar que la política se pueda apoyar. Gracias a usted, señor Preven pasa adelante. El de Antonio Ramírez está aquí, Antonia pasa adelante por favor, Antonio Ramírez, gracias. Esta es la semana esta es la ordenanza de la semana justa para la oral y tiene que ver con ahora este comité. Lo hemos hecho, vos ya sabés que este espacio se puede hacer porque hablamos de lo que es empleadores de más de 200 targets y tiene que ver con tener una oportunidad justa, eso puede ser.
...
Oh my gosh, you're looking at me Stash. He's a four-month-old male and he's kind of a chatty Cathy, not you Cathy, but a cat chatty Cathy. His A number is 1902528, he's five months, four months old and he is darling, what a look on his face. Yeah, and tell him, tell him you're ready to go home Stash, four months old. All of the animals from the city shelters are vaccinated, microchipped and sterilized before they go home. We're taking a picture of June and Johnny, how cute, both females, one's a little more shy than the others, we've got gray tabbies, about six months, they must be sisters, right Cathy?
I don't know if they're sisters, but they came in together.
And they, they're cats, they look alike. And we're aging them at six months, they're both females and they live together very friendly. A1901037 and A1901039. Oh, and look at little June or Johnny, June and Johnny, right, June or Johnny is deciding that maybe she would like to have her, well, if my sister's getting her picture on camera, well, how about me? Oh, what's that outside? Oh, it's something else, come on sweetie, get your, let's see if we can get a picture of you mama, almost, there you go, good job sweetie. Two six-month-olds, oh, look it, we're getting kind of gutsy here, let's play with the tail of the cat above me, oh, I haven't met you before, A1901037, A1901039. You want two cats, they're already adjusted to each other and you know what, two cats are as good as two dogs, especially when they're six months old, they need playtime and you know what, they'll play with each other and not bother you quite as much, right?
Right, exactly.
So this is the cat whose tail was being played with by the kittens down below, this is Gorda, Gorda is a female, she was an owner's surrender and how does that affect their personalities Cathy?
When they first come in, they're a little upset, but as we go along and we give them love and attention, they realize, hey, this place isn't so bad after all.
They're used to love and attention, right?
Yes, and we give it to them as much as we can, every time I'm here, it's like everybody's my baby, so everybody gets a lot of attention and love.
Awesome, and it's hard transition, I mean, it's hard for a stray, but a stray's been kind of out there on their own, but a cat that's been in a house is used to personal attention from humans and they're in a place, an enclosure that's small, there are other cats making noises, but she seems to have settled in pretty well, you must be doing well with your attention.
When she first came in, she was a little shy, but she's opened up a lot since then.
So Gorda is, geez, she's not even a year old yet, her A number is 1900514, oh my gosh, she's gorgeous and look at how, she's settled down actually quite a bit for such a young cat, who knows how she would behave in a house?
I think she would be excellent in a house, yes.
Because of this behavior, she's calmed down, she's getting attention, less than a year old, beautiful, she might get along nicely with Stash, she didn't seem to mind having her tail played with. So now we're looking at Missy who is, they're calling her a calico, she's an interesting So if you're thinking about a cat, you know what? They've got plenty, and actually, you can take more than one. There is no restriction. I think the number of animals you can have in your house now is like...
Three.
Three. Okay, you could actually, if you're looking for a combination of cats, take three. Right now, we're looking at Maddie. There's a discussion about how old she is. The card says four months. We're thinking she's a little big for a four-month-old cat, but you know, that, that's a pleasure in, in getting a cat from a shelter. You don't really know makeup stories, you know? She could be four years, probably not 40. Her A number is A1902062. Beautiful white chest, kind of like a tuxedo with a brown tabby. And her personality, Cathy?
Very lovable, very, very lovable. She just wants to be held. No, that's okay.
Okay, well, okay, so now we're back from a Missy to a Maddie who wants to be held, and not a big talker, so if you want some quiet in your house, Maddie may be the cat for you. Oh, she's kind of like the young Sunny. Look at that, she loves attention. She wants to be held. You want somebody sitting on your lap while you watch, oh, I don't know, Jeopardy? Here you go, Maddie may be the cat. So now we're looking at Sands. Sands was an owner's surrender. He's about two years old. His A number is 1898431. Cathy is saying that Sands doesn't have a lot of interaction, but you know what? He was an owner's surrender, and he may just be going, "I don't know where I am, and I don't care."
He loves that blanket, though. He does love to cozy up on a nice big fluffy blanket.
Okay, so we do know that much about him, because if you've noticed other pictures, we've had him on newspaper, but Sands says, "You know what? I would really like a cozy blanket, and I'm not so sure about getting my picture on the camera, but you know what? If you come down, you could bring me out of my shell. Come on, Sands, we'd like to see you." Good boy, Sands. If you want a little bit of a challenge, and if you have time to socialize with a cat, Sands might be the one for you. Beautiful stripes, beautiful black tabby is what we're calling him. 1898431, about two years old. Okay, so I think this is the first black cat for today. This is Salem. Oh my gosh, what a nice stretch, Salem. That was very nice. This one is five years old, a male. He was a stray. He's beautiful.
Very, very nice, quiet cat, but loves attention.
Black cats have a reputation, and black dogs, for being more hard to adopt.
You know, I don't, no, I haven't noticed that yet. A lot of people do come in asking for specific colors, and one we get is black cats.
Yeah, and it's interesting, because of all the cats we've seen today, this is the first black cat. Frequently, we have more than, more of them are black than not, but this guy is gorgeous. He has a beautiful coat. He's been here for a couple of weeks. He seems pretty settled in.
Yes, he is. Like I said, very quiet, very lovable, doesn't give me no problems when I'm changing.
And did you hear that, everybody? No problems? This may be the cat for you. If you don't want to work, you just take him home, and he'll settle in. We're now looking at Missy number two, who's also called a calico with really interesting markings. Beautiful markings on her head, she's mostly white. She's about two years old. She was also a stray. Missy, you're beautiful. She's curious, because calicos can have some attitude a little bit. Yes, Cathy?
Yes, they can. They can either be very independent or wanting to get out, and you don't let her out, and she gets upset.
Okay, so sorry, Missy two, did you want not to say hi to the cat underneath you? Maybe, how about your head, sweetheart? There you go, good look. A1902767. So for those of you out there who are calico fans, this girl is gorgeous. She's two years old, still young. Missy number two, you can name her whatever you want. Do they care?
No, I don't think they care. I think everybody responds to Kitty.
Okay, there you go. She could be Miss Kitty. How about Miss Kitty?
So that's our show. I hope you saw a dog, or a cat, or a bunny that you just want to rush down to South LA and adopt right away, but if you didn't, please go to their website, laanimalservices.com, and you can see every single animal at all six LA city shelters on that website. You can also get a lot of animal care advice on that website, and you can find out other needs in case you can't adopt. They always need donations of food, and toys, and newspapers, and blankets, and beds, and all kinds of things, and money, of course, and they always need volunteers, volunteers they couldn't run the shelter without them. So thank you for watching. See you next time on Adopt a Pet Today.
In L.A. this week...
The Great Shakeout Earthquake Drill comes to one college campus, the first of its kind in terms of earthquake preparedness. I'm Gil Reyes with details next.
I'm Anna Marco. City leaders are helping the Groundlings celebrate 45 years of groundbreaking laughter and entertainment in Hollywood. That's coming up.
A new door opens up to help women and children get from homelessness into housing. I'm Rasha Goel, and that story's up next.
Hey, everyone. I'm Yana Kay. Here's what's happening on L.A. this week. When it comes to brush fires, preparation is key in saving lives. We sat down with LAFD Fire Chief Ralph Tarazas to talk about the recent fires and what we can all do to stay safe.
More and more Los Angeles residents are reminded that wildfire season isn't just a season anymore. It's all year long, and it brings with it concern, uncertainty, and the possibility of some real, serious danger. But there are some steps we can all take to be better prepared. And Los Angeles Fire Chief Ralph Tarazas is here to talk about wildfires and about preparedness. Thank you so much for joining us.
Well, thank you for having me.
Let's talk a little bit about the Saddle Ridge Fire. Tell us the scope of it, and can you bring us up to date on what's happening?
Absolutely. Last week, it was a Thursday night about 9 o'clock. I was at home watching the news, and I saw the report of the fire. I saw a visual from a news helicopter. When I saw that visual image, I thought we were going to lose several hundred homes because of the wind. We were able to mitigate that incident. We lost 17 homes. We saved thousands. We lost 17 homes, and the loss of one home is a big disappointment. And we're always looking to see how can we do better next time.
What more should the public know to keep us all safe?
I think the thing that I would ask there is that the public sign up for NotifyLA. Text 888-777. If you want to know more specifics about what you need to do, you can go to our website at lafd.org. There you'll find information like you should trim all the tree limbs that hang above your house. You should clear the gutters from leaves and pine needles, anything that will ignite. So those tips and many more tips will be found on that website.
Well, thank you for doing a wonderful job for saving so many homes and so many lives in Los Angeles. Thank you for joining us today.
Well, thank you for having me. I'm very proud of the men and women of the Los Angeles City Fire Department. I believe we're the finest fire department in the world, and I say that on a regular basis because I truly believe that. We have a great group of men and women who are dedicated professionals dedicated to the safety of the people of Los Angeles.
Turning now to our homelessness crisis. Did you know that a big portion of those living on the streets are young women between the ages of 18 to 24? Well, these young women face unique challenges, but as Rasha Goel reports, a new bridge home is helping them overcome those challenges and change their lives.
The Wallace House is opening its doors to 15 young women between the ages of 18 to 24 and their children who are experiencing homelessness. They now have a place to call home.
We now have 42 beds for young mothers and their children. And take it from me, my wife and I have been involved in the foster care system for almost a decade, and we know these are tough journeys for these young people who by definition have gone through some of the worst trauma in this city even before facing homelessness.
For countless young women and children...
In L.A. this week.
The Great Shakeout Earthquake Drill comes to one college campus, the first of its kind in terms of earthquake preparedness. I'm Gil Reyes with details next.
I'm Anna Marcos. City leaders are helping the Groundlings celebrate 45 years of groundbreaking laughter and entertainment in Hollywood. That's coming up.
A new door opens up to help women and children get from homelessness into housing. I'm Rasha Goel, and that story's up next.
I'm Yana Kay. Here's what's happening on L.A. this week. When it comes to brush fires, preparation is key in saving lives. We sat down with LAFD Fire Chief Ralph Tarazas to talk about the recent fires and what we can all do to stay safe.
More and more Los Angeles residents are reminded that wildfire season isn't just a season anymore. It's all year long, and it brings with it concern, uncertainty, and the possibility of some real, serious danger. But there are some steps we can all take to be better prepared, and Los Angeles Fire Chief Ralph Tarazas is here to talk about wildfires and about preparedness. Thank you so much for joining us.
Well, thank you for having me.
Let's talk a little bit about the Saddle Ridge Fire. Tell us the scope of it, and can you bring us up to date on what's happening?
Absolutely. Last week, it was a Thursday night about 9 o'clock. I was at home watching the news, and I saw the report of the fire. I saw a visual from a news helicopter. When I saw that visual image, I thought we were going to lose several hundred homes because of the wind. We were able to mitigate that incident. We lost 17 homes. We saved thousands. We lost 17 homes, and the loss of one home is a big disappointment, and we're always looking to see how can we do better next time.
What more should the public know to keep us all safe?
I think the thing that I would ask there is that the public sign up for Notify L.A. Text 888-777. If you want to know more specifics about what you need to do, you can go to our website at lafd.org. There you'll find information like you should trim all the tree limbs that hang above your house. You should clear the gutters from leaves and pine needles, anything that will ignite. So those tips and many more tips will be found on that website.
Well, thank you for doing a wonderful job for saving so many homes and so many lives in Los Angeles. Thank you for joining us today.
Well, thank you for having me. I'm very proud of the men and women of Los Angeles City Fire Department. I believe we're the finest fire department in the world, and I say that on a regular basis because I truly believe that. We have a great group of men and women who are dedicated professionals dedicated to the safety of the people of Los Angeles.
Turning now to our homelessness crisis, did you know that a big portion of those living on the streets are young women between the ages of 18 to 24? Well, these young women face unique challenges, but as Rasha Goel reports, a new bridge home is helping them overcome those challenges and change their lives.
The Wallace House is opening its doors to 15 young women between the ages of 18 to 24 and their children who are experiencing homelessness. They now have a place to call home.
We now have 42 beds for young mothers and their children. And take it from me, my wife and I have been involved in the foster care system for almost a decade, and we know these are tough journeys for these young people who by definition have gone through some of the worst trauma in this city even before facing homelessness.
For countless young women and children, for the young women transitioning out of foster care with nowhere to live, or for the young mother raising her child in a tent or in the backseat of her car, Wallace House sees you. It recognizes your struggle, and it says, welcome home.
Aviva Family and Children's Services, a nonprofit organization formerly known as Hamburger Home, will be providing support, therapeutic services, and guidance to at-risk children and families.
The Wallace House is more than just a place to live. There will be services and programs available to these young women to help transform their lives. This room that you see here is a place for women to come and pick up some clothing they may need for job interviews or perhaps even learn a new skill.
After we get done with their basic needs, a safe place to live, food on a regular basis, healthy food and clothing, then we can start really doing the work that'll help these women launch into their adulthood. So we're going to be having parent education classes, credit recovery for high school, applications for college.
The Wallace House is a bridge home, which is part of Mayor Garcetti's plan to give homeless Angelenos in every neighborhood a refuge in the community until they can be connected with permanent housing.
This is our eighth Bridge Home site to open, keeping us on track to open 26 by July 1st of this coming year.
Single mothers experiencing homelessness face unimaginable challenges. They're responsible for themselves and their children. They are more vulnerable to crime and exploitation, but even more challenging is that many housing centers are simply not equipped to welcome them in.
A home that will hopefully provide a new beginning and new opportunities.
Officials say this recent effort by Aviva will contribute to the more than 200 units of supportive bridge housing being planned in Hollywood. Community members and city leaders in Council District 8 are taking a bite out of crime in their neighborhood thanks to a new initiative that's sparking real change.
Our children are under tremendous amounts of stress. They've been under this stress for a long, long time.
At the beginning of this summer, loss of Nuptse hustle, there was an uptick in shootings in South Los Angeles and the 8th District in particular. We're concerned because the summer was coming on. We did not want that to increase, so we implemented this community safety initiative to help stem the tide. We're here to celebrate because not only did it stem the tide, we actually reduced crime by a total of 15%. We had healing circles. We had safe passages. We had community events. We had gang interventionists. We had youth workers, all the things that helps to build a community and keep it safe.
Whatever's going on in the community, the gun violence, the overpolicing in our community, the domestic violence, the substance abuse and all of that, and all that stems from somewhere, and be able to have a safe space to talk about these issues in a real and holistic way, I think is truly powerful.
For us, it's bringing in new relationships, bringing in old relationships, bringing them together, knowing that together everyone achieves more, and that means team across the city.
By us having a safe passage program, it creates a safety net around our parks and our schools within our community, and it gives the folks within our community a chance to police themselves.
What could be the most prepared college campus in the event of an earthquake takes part in the largest earthquake drill in the world. More than 24 million people participated in the Great Shakeout. Gil Reyes has more.
Viola University in La Mirada could be the safest in the world in the event of an earthquake. The campus and emergency crews practice response during the Great Shakeout, a day when millions of people take part in emergency drills in preparation for the big one.
It's a big facility. We don't know how many victims were really trapped or actually hurt, so we have to go out and we do what we have to actually do. We do a search and rescue. We triage as much as we can.
Viola University is hoping to not even get to this point of injuries. They have the first system of any college in the nation to issue earthquake warnings up to a minute in advance.
The school's Shake Alert system announces incoming quakes on loudspeakers located throughout the campus, possibly giving students and staff those extra precious seconds to drop cover and hold on.
We have 6,100 students here at Viola, but it pales to a USC and a UCLA in terms of number of students on campus. Hopefully, today is a day that inspires other universities, other civic leaders, state leaders to consider those kinds of systems for their programs as well.
Regarding smartphone warnings, the governor announces two new systems now available throughout California. There's the My Shake downloadable app, also wireless emergency alerts, which provides warnings by text message. Los Angeles has its own Shake Alert L.A. app, but what about for information after a quake?
We need to remember that there's other ways of communication, the radio, the AM radio, the 24-hour news networks. Those are very important because they're going to give you up-to-date information. Television provides a lot of information as well, so let's not get so caught up in our phones. Most likely, you're not going to have Wi-Fi. You're not going to have cell connectivity.
Viola students went so far as to apply horror makeup to make their injuries and the drill seem real.
That was a cool learning experience to see what it might actually be like. So maybe if I do get in that kind of a circumstance, it's easier to think it through.
The biggest thing that was like an epiphany was just how long it takes to get through a group of like 100 people. First responders we had just making their way through the fallen debris and everything and assessing people. It was a good knowing experience if I was ever in a real emergency to be able to help myself to the best of my ability and to work with them in order to save as many lives as possible.
At home, it's also important to have a two-week supply of water and non-perishable food ready to go, also an emergency preparedness kit. For other lifesaving tips, log onto ReadyLA.org. A new upgrade is in store for L.A.'s Emergency 911 Dispatch Center. Anna Marcos finds out how the business of saving lives is about to go more cutting edge.
911 Emergency Operator 230.
L.A.'s 911 Dispatch Center is now in the middle of training all its 911 operators so that they stay ahead of the curve. That's because the state of California is getting ready to change to its next-gen 911 system, and L.A. will be ready. In fact, part of its program will go onboard this month.
As this on-the-job training shows, L.A. is indeed jumping the gun when it comes to the new cutting-edge technology.
Well, Next Gen 911 is all about being capable of getting videotape from the public, and if you're in a high-rise building, we can pinpoint what floor you're on or what room you're in. Right now, we're talking about California in November 2021. Eventually, the whole nation will be involved with this.
And sometime this month, the computerized part of the program will kick in at L.A.'s two dispatch centers, one in downtown L.A. and one in the Valley.
We went from our flip phone, and now I think this is a smartphone. It's a smart computer.
All this while the center handles its usual workload of as many as 11,000 calls a day. 911 dispatchers not only field calls from the public, they mobilize the officers who respond.
They are lifesavers. I call it proactive dispatching.
I took a suicide call, and a gentleman wanted to take his life, and I said, was anybody with you? And he said, just me and my dog. And I asked him, well, who's going to take care of your dog when you leave? He's like, well, I didn't think about it. It was rewarding to me that I saved him and his dog.
Besides all the calls, many of the 911 dispatchers are also instructors. Miguel Estrada has a new trainee, Selena Guerrero.
What's the name of the church?
We do a lot of prompting, like if the questions, you know, like, okay, you know, ask her this, ask her that.
She has weapons.
Okay. Does she have any weapons?
I just had a shooting call, and yeah, the lady was frantic, so I wasn't able to get the information I needed from her right away. So it was trying to calm her down to get the information.
So was that a scary trial by fire kind of moment?
Yeah.
We put them through extensive training, and by extensive, I mean weeks and weeks and weeks of training.
And did you know some of these dispatchers get to go to the Emmys and Oscars and other big L.A. events? They help with emergency calls there, well, virtually, not in person.
I'm at a separate location, so I'm not dressed in a gown.
911 is also trying online reporting for certain calls. For example, during 4th of July or New Year's Eve, you can get an app and report fireworks or loud parties online.
July the 4th, for an example, we take up to 16,000 emergency calls that day. When you're calling 911, you are tying up the system for real emergencies.
And that next real emergency could be your own. Whether dispatch operators can answer it within 15 seconds or half an hour could make all the difference.
And remember, if you have a non-life-threatening emergency, you can call the non-emergency line at 877-ASK-LAPD. That's 877-275-5273. One of the key people on the Sixth Street Viaduct Replacement Project is the program manager from the city's Bureau of Engineering. Anita Bennett introduces us to a woman who's making a mark in a male-dominated field. As construction crews work to bring the iconic Sixth Street Viaduct back to life, Julie Allen works to make sure the project stays true to the design plan.
So I ensure that the project is built in accordance with the design, and we lead the city with the beautiful new viaduct when the project is complete.
Allen is program manager on what's become the largest bridge project in Los Angeles history.
What you can see going on behind me is that the contractor is building false work, which is a temporary bridge over the viaduct structure, but they're spanning over the railroad tracks so that they can construct the actual concrete bridge on top of the temporary bridge.
Originally built in 1932, the Sixth Street Viaduct connected the Arts District to Boyle Heights, but after decades of use, the viaduct started to crumble, and that prompted the city to demolish it in 2016 and begin construction on a more seismically sound structure.
But will the pump be able to reach all the way over to this knuckle?
It does, but it's...
Since the $488 million replacement project started, Allen says the city has taken great strides to increase diversity on the design team.
When I started the project, I was the only woman on the team, and as we've been filling positions, and I look for the best person to fill the position, it's been a woman in many cases, so a lot of our leadership roles on the project are filled by women.
Allen graduated from UCLA with a degree in civil engineering. After 27 years with the city, she now helps recruit and mentor other women.
She's a role model to me in a way because I see how she, you know, carries herself as a female engineer in a male-dominated industry, and I just, I look up to her and I, you know, I learn a lot from her, just how she handles herself.
Julie has been a fantastic mentor, especially to me personally. I work very closely with her every single day, and just the wealth of knowledge that she has and the leadership that she brings to the project from all her past projects, it's really empowering.
The project has created hundreds of jobs, and once it's complete, there will be a park here and more green space for this community.
We're going to be installing 12 acres of new park space that spans all the way from what you see over here on the north side of the bridge all the way to the 101 freeway. This is a very parkour community, and the viaduct structure itself was very, very beloved to the community before, and this new one is going to be an iconic structure, not only for this neighborhood, but for all of Los Angeles.
The project is expected to be completed in 2022. Tribal dances, drums, and entertainment took center stage as hundreds of people gathered at Grand Park to honor Native American culture and history.
Indigenous Peoples' Day in Los Angeles was created on August 30th of 2017 after a nearly two-year process, and that process began with a motion that I introduced to take a look, to do an evaluation, a study of what it would look like, what it could look like, what the possibilities were of eliminating Columbus Day and taking a look at a way to honor Indigenous people.
Celebrating Columbus is really predicated on the mythology that he discovered a whole entire hemisphere that was already populated by millions of Indigenous peoples, and so we're here to set the record straight. Indigenous peoples have been here since the beginning of time, and we will continue to be here. We're members of beautiful, resilient tribal nations all throughout the hemisphere.
This is one indicative of what can happen, you know, as far as history being changed. You know, people want to stand for right. They don't want to stand for wrong. They don't want to be remembered for doing something negative, something wrong, you know, something that would set electricity to certain families and generations and cultures.
Native American Indigenous Day is just the beginning. It's going to spread across the entire world, and it's going to be like Mardi Gras in the Orleans. It's going to be spread, the entire world is going to take place, and everybody's going to do the same thing we're doing here.
Some relief from city council for renters facing no-fault evictions. A new pilot program helps cool city streets, and the pedestrian bridge in Silver Lake takes shape. All this in City B. The L.A. City Council unanimously adopted an emergency ordinance aimed at stopping no-fault evictions of apartment rental tenants until January 1st, when the new law that provides similar protections take effect. In Atwater Village, the Steel Trust superstructure of the Red Card Pedestrian Bridge arrived in L.A. this week and installed. The bridge will connect the communities of Atwater Village and Silver Lake across the L.A. River. Mayor Eric Garcetti has announced a pilot program that combines cool pavement with shade canopies and trees to help decrease the temperatures on streets and walkways. It's a Hollywood institution that has trained many of today's best-known comedians and funny movie stars, and now Councilmember Paul Coretts is helping the Groundlings celebrate their 45th birthday. Anna Marcos takes a look.
Try to control the weird faces.
Forty-five years of funny stuff, and now the Groundlings Theater and School, a homegrown Hollywood landmark, is getting honored on its birthday by the city and Councilmember Paul Coretts.
I guess it's ironic that I'm doing this because I have no sense of humor, but...
I was kicked out of a serious acting class and told that all I wanted to do was make people laugh.
So you were too funny for acting?
I was too, yes. I was told I was too funny, but when I got to the Groundlings, it's like a family. I found my funny home.
And to think these guys were just a group of actors back in 1974 who wanted to work on their craft, so they held a workshop. That turned into community performances, which led to jobs on shows like Saturday Night Live, and now the Groundlings is the go-to place when you want funny actors in Hollywood.
I don't think any of us imagined SNL would go on for 45 years. I don't think anybody ever imagined that the Groundlings would be here after 45 years. We were just a bunch of goofballs, you know?
Since 1974, the Groundlings Theater and School has been the foremost comedy training ground in Hollywood and the springboard for countless careers, including comic geniuses from film and television.
Think Melissa McCarthy, Kristen Wiig, Lisa Kudrow, Will Ferrell, Adam Sandler, John Lovitz, just a few superstars like that. But even more than the superstars, the Groundlings have brought laughter and good times to many, even our so-called humorless councilmember, Paul Coretts.
I went on my second date with my wife, Gail, to the Groundlings, and we had such a great time laughing together that I think that really started a relationship that has lasted 35 years, and so I credit the Groundlings.
What is it you think makes you funny and amazing?
Nothing, nothing. And I interrupt people.
So you're not funny?
Not in the slightest.
And you're in the Groundlings?
Yes, I am.
Let that happen.
I don't know. Mistakes are made constantly in life.
But this is no mistake. Being funny is serious business.
Not that I didn't have fun, but I think I truly took it as I was like, this is like my master's program, and so I took it, I think, very serious.
The Groundlings have also become a community presence with classes for the general public as well as training for corporations like Google and Disney.
And does that help business?
Yes, it helps business. It helps politics. It helps business. It helps families. It helps relationships.
Yes and is the foundation of improv. We build on each other's ideas. Anything is possible.
Apparently, everything in life goes down easier with a little yes-anding and a little laughter. Happy birthday, Groundlings.
For more information on the school or the theater company, visit groundlings.com. The original farmer's market at Third and Fairfax brought everyone together for a good old-fashioned country fair, complete with pig races and pie-eating contests.
We are having our Fall Festival. It's an event the farmer's market has been hosting since 1934. And it's basically a county fair in the heart of a big city.
We're going on the bell this time. Listen for the bell. There's the bell, and here comes the...
There's the bell, and here comes Albert.
Today, Bob won our first show, so he's out here at the little winner's circle doing photos.
Right now, we have the miners on behind us, and they've been a favorite. They are here every year. We have bands throughout the weekend.
I think it's great for kids. There's not a lot to do in this area with kids, and it was free, which is amazing.
It's nice to bring the kids out. They love petting the animals, and it's just a perfect Saturday to spend time with the family. Say hi.
Hi.
My mom lives across the street. We came to visit her, and she told me there was an amazing fair at the Grove, so we came to walk around. What do you like the most so far that you saw?
Uh, the pig race.
All right, Judge, let's make it official. First place, second.
I grew up around animals, and I think everybody should have the opportunity to be around them. They're very special creatures.
I think the reason why Farmer's Market has endured 485 years is it really is a small village in the middle of the city. You know, most of our businesses are family-owned and operated. People come to Farmer's Market and they feel at home. You know, LA is a big city, so it's nice when you have a place you can just call home.
Enjoy an all-access pass to multiple art venues at Grand Park, listen to some great music at a benefit concert, and help celebrate the opening of Metro's Blue Line. All this and things to do. Enjoy a pass to all things artistic throughout Grand Avenue during their All-Access Celebration. This annual arts event will offer workshops and activities throughout the Grand Park downtown LA area. Enjoy festivities including a scavenger hunt, a gallery talk at the Broad, or attend an LA Opera performance at the Dorothy Chandler Pavilion. There is free admission to Moca and much more. The Grand Avenue Arts All-Access drops Saturday, November 2nd. For details, visit grandavenuearts.org. Don't miss the Silver Lake Conservatory of Music's annual benefit. This highly anticipated evening is the biggest fundraiser for the conservatory, which brings dynamic music education to the people of LA. The evening will be hosted by comedian Marc Maron with musical acts including Red Hot Chili Peppers. The Silver Lake Conservatory of Music Benefit happens Saturday, November 2nd, beginning at 6:00 PM. Learn more at silverlakeconservatory.org. Going blue just got more exciting. Join Metro LA for Blue Line Celebration, the latest opening of the Blue Metro A Line. The opening will be accompanied by entertainment from local performers, food, community booths, and special giveaways. So don't miss out on the Blue Line Celebration, happening Saturday, November 2nd, from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM at The Block, located at 750 West 7th Street. For more info, visit metro.net. And that's a look at some things to do. That's it for this edition. I'm Yana Kay. From all of us here at LA This Week, thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityb.org. We're also on Facebook, Twitter, and YouTube. See you next time for more of LA This Week.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for joining us here. This is an incredible moment for many of us, for myself, for many of the activists here joining us today. Two years ago, we stood on these very steps of City Hall, calling on LA City Council to divest from Wells Fargo for its role in financing the Dakota Access Pipeline, among other predatory, harmful acts against the community, against communities of color and low-income communities. And our demand was for the city to move our public funds out of Wells Fargo and into a socially environmentally responsible bank. And with persistent coordinated public pressure from divest LA activists and Indigenous peoples, within nine months, LA City Council took a monumental step forward and voted to move approximately $100 million of the city's daily operating funds out of Wells Fargo. And this was incredible. It sent a very powerful message to Wall Street that if you harm our communities, we will fight and defund you. So our cities in California, cities across the nation, spend billions in debt services to borrow money from Wall Street banks, who then leverage our public funds to finance these destructive, harmful industries that our communities actively fight against. And despite the litany of abuses, Wall Street banks have very little incentive to change, knowing that we are essentially a captive market. And there is an obvious and immediate demand for an alternative to for-profit banks, which underserve the people. The divestment work from activists within the last few years really, truly set the groundwork for California to become a battleground state in the fight to divest from Wall Street. And the solution was to create socially responsible, publicly-owned, ethical, transparent, accountable institutions, locally-controlled institutions, that would put our public dollars to work for the people across the state instead of private shareholders. Following divest LA, we launched Public Bank LA and led the Measure B campaign to create a public bank in Los Angeles. Our grassroots effort mobilized over 430,000 Angelinos to say yes to a public bank. With 44% of the vote, we came close. And with the momentum that we built behind the Measure B campaign, we immediately pivoted to create a large-scale effort to create public banks across the state. And this time around, it wasn't going to be LA versus Wall Street. We built a 10-city-strong coalition and formed the California Public Banking Alliance, which is a grassroots network of hundreds of activists from across the state, working together to break free from Wall Street exploitation and bring the public banking option to California. So we conceived of AB 857 as a pathway for our cities to form public banks. We created protections and oversight in place to ensure that these banks are economically viable, that these banks are nonprofit corporations owned entirely by cities and counties, governed by independent boards of directors, run by professional bankers. Public banks will partner with community banks and credit unions to strengthen their capacity to make socially beneficial loans. And under our new law, cities can now own banks that will leverage their deposit base and lending power to directly benefit the communities they serve. Working together with our bill authors, Assembly Member Miguel Santiago and David Chu from San Francisco, we mobilized supporters from across the state and passed through nine votes in the most powerful legislature in the nation, with Wall Street lobbying to oppose us at every step of the way. And still, we won because it's an idea whose time has come, and public banking is a long, overdue evolutionary step towards creating a just economy. Now, with Governor Newsom's signature on AB 857, California, the fifth-largest economy in the world, is now moving towards a new financial system centered not on maximizing profit, but centered on maximizing the impact of profit. Instead of a private model where profit and resource are drained away from our communities by out-of-state banks, a public banking model recaptures the interest and profit, and wealth is reinvested back into our local communities. And now that public banking is law, the fight pivots back to the local level. So if you can craft policy, create a business plan, navigate finance, research, create content, this is your calling. Join the fight. Now we create our bank. This is the first public bank. This would be the first public bank in 100 years and the first city-owned bank in the United States. So go to bit.ly-publicbankla and join our team to create the evolutionary, revolutionary Los Angeles public bank built by and 100% accountable to the people of LA. Thank you. Next, I'd like to introduce my friend and our Measure B champion, Council President Herb Wesson, Trinity Tran, with Public Bank LA and California Public Banking Alliance. Thank you.
First, let me just say good morning to each and every one of you, and I thank you for coming out. You know, Trinity did a great job in laying out the specifics. Just give her a round of applause. And I'll answer questions later if there are any. But I just, for all of us, sometimes in life, you just want to savor the moment. And that's what I'm doing right now. Now, I've known where she at, Beverly forever, but I met Trinity in a bar. Now, let me explain that. The Olympic Park Neighborhood Council that's in the district that I represent holds their meetings at a very important establishment in the district that I represent called the Catch One. So I'm at a meeting, and all of a sudden, this person gets up and says, you know, the Councilman Wesson has introduced a motion regarding banking, and we in the community support that. That's where we met. And after that, I met Carlos, who will be my friend for life, Ellen Brown, and so many other people that are standing behind us. When this began, there were people that thought that we were outside of our minds. There were people that thought this would never happen. And we, as a group of people, we have been up, we have been down, we have been shaken around, but yet we still stand. You know, sometimes people are afforded the opportunity to witness history. And sometimes people are afforded the opportunity to be a part of history. But rarely do people have the chance to make history. And I just want to say to everyone standing beside me and behind me that you folk have made history, and you should give yourselves a round of applause. I do believe that this is the way the government was supposed to work, where we partner with the people, the government, the people together, trying to affect change. Now, I have been in this business for a while, but I am not skilled enough. I don't have the ability to articulate just how grateful we are to have partnered with Assembly Member Miguel Santiago. So many people don't understand exactly how government works. We are so fortunate that we have an individual that is not only smart, committed, but operative, and he negotiated this like a captain through choppy seas. And at the end of the day, I think the voice of the people won. And the last thing that I'm going to do before I bring him up is say, within the next 48 hours, it is my intention to introduce a motion before the Los Angeles City Council that directs our chief legislative analyst and our chief administrative officer to put out an RFQ, a Request for Qualifications, to bring on a banking expert so the city of LA can begin putting together the guts. We are almost there, but we're not there yet. So what we have to do is stick together like we did when we were up and down and around and around. We held firm. We didn't give up. And if we do that with this motion that I'm introducing, I think we will move this ball further down the court. And so, with that said, not only has this guy been my friend for a decade, he's been a go-to type of a person. Whenever I have partnered with him, whenever the city of Los Angeles has partnered with him, we have won. Because not only is he a committed public servant, he hates losing. So he will stay up all night strategizing as to how he can deliver for the state and the city and the people that he loves. And it was such an honor and pleasure to work with him and to play a small role with him and this great coalition of people that are standing behind me. Let's give a round of applause to our quarterback on this issue, and that's Miguel Santiago.
Well, thank you for the nice introduction, but really, quite frankly, it was the coalition of folks who made this happen. And let me be very clear and explain why. In the legislature, you have huge fights, and there's money interest on each side. And oftentimes, you have lobbyists on all sides, but this is probably the one fight that I have seen in the legislature, at least in my lifetime, where there are zero pay lobbyists on the public side. Let's take a look for a second. I don't think that we ever had a lobbyist. I don't think that anybody from any firm stood up and walked the halls and knocked. Think about this. This is a bill where people-powered, where a people-powered movement took on a huge financial industry, where they hired many lobbyists, where they knew exactly how the place operated, where they extended their tentacles into almost every office, and people power prevailed. And I think you have to understand the significance of that. Because a lot of us who are in elected office can sit here and take the credit, but that's not really what happened. What happened was that the arguments prevailed. When we stood up and we basically said, why not a public bank for a public good? Because, look, the old system's just simply not working. I don't have to explain to anybody that income inequality is getting greater. They have 1% of the population who owns most of the wealth in America. That in California, that we've become the fifth-largest economy, and more and more people live in on the streets. That the banking industry chose Wall Street professionals and shareholders over people living in their homes. That's not a secret. But here's what made this work, and we will say it over and over and over again. This bill laid out public confidence and the ability to understand that you can actually get a bill through, and that people can tackle those who are making the most amount of profit, that we can beat back Wall Street, that we can beat back high-powered lobbyists over the best-of-arguments that says we can put people first over profit. And this is big news, big news in the state of California. What's also big news today is the fact that Los Angeles is going to lead. Los Angeles, under Wesson's leadership and under the council leadership, is going to dive right in to setting a public bank. Think about it. And believe me, their well-paid lobbyists for the financial industry will be walking these halls, telling members not to vote on this, and they're going to use all the same old tired arguments. But we know that if we beat them once in the Capitol, one of the most powerful capitals in the United States of America, that we know that right here at Ground Zero in Los Angeles, we're going to have to double down on the coalition of people who made this happen. We are going to have to get the council presidents back. We are going to have to stand by our council members who support this and make the very strongest arguments that we ought to put people first over profits. That's what's big news today. If we can take them in Sacramento, we're sure as heck going to take them here in Los Angeles, and we're going to establish the first public bank in California. Thank you very much. And I'd like to introduce the... And I'd like to introduce the... Lo importante de hora, no solamente es que vamos a establecer un banco público aquí en el estado de California. También lo muy importante es, si vemos en la historia de California, jamás hemos visto en esta reciente historia donde la gente le gana a una industria. Al lado de la gente, no tuvimos ningún lobbyist. Al lado de la gente, no pagamos a corporaciones para que entren a hacer los argumentos. Simplemente que los argumentos de poner la gente enfrente del dinero fue más importante. Y pongan atención, ningún lobbyist trabajó por nosotros. Ningún lobbyist representó a ninguna de esta gente. Lo que pasó aquí es que la gente se organizó y el poder de la gente hizo este política realidad. Y la urgencia y la importancia de hora, no solamente es eso, pero es que Los Ángeles va a moverse a establecer un banco público porque preferimos el beneficio público a que alguien haga dinero en Wall Street. Eso es lo importante y necesitamos ese mismo tipo de movimiento de gente que ponga presión para que sigamos aquí a ser un banco público. Muchas gracias. Gracias al concejal, el presidente del concejal, gracias a toda la coalición que está aquí porque vamos a hacer un banco público aquí en California, en Los Ángeles empezando. Y quiero presentar al director del Partido Democrático aquí en Los Ángeles. I wanna introduce the chair of the Los Angeles County Democratic Party, Mark Gonzalez.
Good morning, good morning!
Morning!
The Los Angeles County Democratic Party was the first to endorse last year's effort to explore our public banking. We took that risk, we believed then, and we still do today, that public banking is a step towards social, economic, and environmental responsibility, right? For too long, private banks have been profiting on the shoulders of hard-working families. It's time we take control of our local finances and start focusing on Main Street instead of funding Wall Street. And that's what this bill did, right? I stand here before you representing 2.7 million Democrats in LA County. 2.7 million people that believe in families over profits. 2.7 million people that believe we can do better and must do better. The LA Democratic Party is glad to see our elected leaders here looking out for our hard-working families with this public banking initiative. And I just want to make sure that we thank those brave Democrats who got on board early to support AB 857. It wasn't easy because not all Democrats are the same, but there were those who took that step and said, we believe in the people. And so I just want to make sure that we thank Governor Gavin Newsom, who also signed this bill.
Governor Gavin Newsom. He stepped up, man.
Who stepped up to the plate and believed in the people. And of course, Council President Wesson, who's done all he's can at the local level in making sure this coalition was taken seriously up and down the state. So thank you for that. And of course, Assemblymember Santiago, who took on this progressive bill as to what we see it as today and what it will do for the people on the streets, what it means for affordable housing, what it means for jobs, what it means for homelessness solving that crisis. And you took that step and you are that leader for us, as well as Assemblymember Chu up in San Francisco. But we're here in LA, and LA is establishing what we're gonna do next. So thank you, Assemblymember Santiago. And also, I want to make sure that we give credit to Carlos Marquin and Trinity and so many others behind me, who are the boots on the ground, who are volunteers, who don't get paid to do this hard work, but are changing the landscape of what and how California is for 2020 and beyond that. But I'd also like to introduce our brother, who is our county assessor, who also took a risk in supporting this measure early. And he didn't have to do that because we know that his job is very hard and what it means to taxpayers and folks in Los Angeles who are watching what the assessor's office is doing. So without further ado, our brother, county assessor Jeffrey Prang.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Jeff Prang, I'm the Los Angeles County Assessor. And Mark, I did want to start by saying, it's very impressive that you represent 2.7 million people, but I win, I represent 11 million. So I stood here on this plaza, what was it, about a year or two ago, Miguel? When we kicked off this legislation, I was asked to support, less than a year ago. I have to say, at that time, and I've been in politics my entire adult life, and I am supportive of this initiative, but I read the political tea leaves and I thought this was gonna be an uphill climb. And I mean no disrespect to the folks here from Sacramento, but I know how it works in Sacramento. Sometimes the legislation that has the most lobbyists, who tend to most fundraisers, tend to have a disproportionate impact on legislation. So the banks have never been shy about having a big impact in Sacramento. But something happened different in this case. The stars were in alignment. First, we had a real strong vision articulated by the president of the Los Angeles City Council, Herb Wesson, who established the vision and a pathway. We had a masterful legislative floor manager who knows how to work the halls of Sacramento, who knows how to influence his colleagues, a master technician, tactician, and the person of Assemblymember Miguel Santiago. We also had incredible leadership from the community, from Trinity, from Carlos, and from Jennifer, and from all these people behind me. Because they demonstrated that lobbyists and money and fundraisers is not where the buck stops when it comes to good public policy. They worked hard, they showed up in the offices, they made the arguments, and the arguments for a public bank are indisputable. And faced with that sort of information and with voters in their offices, I've been a politician a long time, and usually the voters usually win when it comes to how I will make my decisions. And I think that demonstrates that grassroots activism can prevail against the 800-pound gorillas that seem to dominate in Sacramento and Washington DC. As the assessor, you know, I know firsthand that property and sales taxes really form the foundation for local governments that provide vital public services. Prior to being assessor, I served as a city council member and mayor of the city of West Hollywood for about 18 years. And small cities like West Hollywood also often struggle to find private banking services to meet the complex challenges for a modern municipality and for underserved communities. Private banks are driven by profits and shareholder needs, while a public bank is driven by the needs of the city or county that owns and operates, but most importantly, on behalf of the people who need those services, who are iced out of traditional banking services. A public bank will be able to invest, lend, and provide banking services at lower interest rates than private banks. It will cost less to do business with a public bank. It will satisfy so many needs in this community, particularly for the underserved, the benefits are incalculable. A public bank may use those funds for projects like affordable housing, small business loans, and public infrastructure. It'll provide a safe place for people who are otherwise excluded from major banks to park their money. Public banks provide more local control, transparency, and self-determination over exactly how local dollars are used. And finally, creating a public bank will allow taxpayer money to be held by a financial institution that measures its investment not only in financial terms, but how well it serves the community in which we all belong to. I again want to thank the Assemblymember for allowing me to have even a small peripheral role in supporting this bill. I want to congratulate you, Council President Wesson.
David Chu.
Assemblymember David Chu, Trinity Tran, Carlos Marquin, Jennifer Tanner, and all these great folks behind me for incredible victory. And thank you, Governor Newsom, for signing the bill. Thank you so much. And I think I am now in task with turning this, turning it over to Carlos Marquin, who is one of the lead community...
Organizers.
Organizers.
Thank you.
Give Carlos a round of applause.
Today marks a great day for me and many people that during the foreclosure crisis lost their homes. The number of people that were abused by the banks, the number of people that have suffered at the hands of Wall Street, I don't have to explain that to you. Back in 2012, we had set up a tent over here where we're fighting against Wall Street, trying to change the conversation. All the blame was being put in homeowners for so-called buying homes that they couldn't afford, and we knew that that was not true. We knew that Wall Street had been involved in massive fraudulent practices. And we were able, through Occupy, the Occupy movement, we were able to change the conversation and put the blame where it belonged. But it was not enough. We needed to take it a step further than that. And we know that the solution was being able to form a public bank, taking away, you know, the money that we invest in Wall Street and invested in our communities. And we began the push for public banking. And today, I stand here honored to be among so many great leaders, a movement that really fought from day one and never looked back, knowing that, yes, it was going to be hard, but we were going to overcome if we stuck together, and we did that. We came together, we fought together, we cried together, we lifted our hands together, and we say, yes, it could be done, and we did it. Thank you, everybody.
Okay, now Carlos, you were supposed to bring up, let's bring up Jennifer Tanner at this time.
You got so worked up.
Good morning.
Morning.
My name is Jennifer Tanner. I'm the founder of Indivisible California Green Team. We're the grassroots, we work with our legislators, and we rock. I just want to say thank you to everyone who worked so hard to pass this bill. This was truly a grassroots effort, and on behalf of the groups I worked with, Indivisible California State Strong, Indivisible California Green Team, SoCal 350, Fossil Free California, thank you for your incredible efforts. I'd like to thank Assemblyman Santiago and Assemblyman Chu for the courage to carry this bill and their tireless efforts to pass public banking in spite of the difficulty getting here. And thanks to Trinity Tran for her amazing leadership for the entire coalition. It's been an honor to work with you, truly. And of course, we want to thank Governor Newsom.
Yes. He signed it.
Governor Newsom has consistently been a champion for public banking. We thank him for having the courage to sign this monumental bill and charting a new direction for California. Thank you, Governor Newsom. We're excited because many have spoken today about the value and benefit of public banks. And one of the main benefits is the ability to affect our environment in a very positive way. We see that in California, when the community has a choice, they choose renewable, they choose green. And now that our government funds will be controlled by groups accountable to the local public, California is now in a position to stop funding projects detrimental to our environment, ending financial support for fossil fuel productions like fracking, like Dakota pipelines. We can now start focusing on loans on projects that enhance the environment, such as renewable energy like wind and solar, such as affordable housing near public transportation, and on and on, possibilities endless. We will look back at this moment as a game changer for the Wall Street banks to begin to revisit their policies that show their lack of care for the public good. Wall Street banks choose for profit. Public banks can choose to let the social good be the prominent factor. Germany funded most of their environmental initiatives with public banking. Imagine what California can do.
Where's Trinity? Everybody was avoiding the mic. I did not avoid it. Anyway, so one more round of applause. Trinity, if you could come close, we will, if you have questions, we'll try our very best to answer those questions. Yes, in the back.
Just give me one basic example of how this might work, the way it has worked. I mean, what might be fucking...
Well, I think it all starts with the mission of the bank, which in the legislation refers to, it has to have at its basis, at its core, to do, you know, good for the public. The public has to do public good. So I think that that's gonna be critical in establishing that mission statement. And that's one of the reasons why we're gonna introduce this motion and try to bring in the most creative consulting team that we can, that's gonna continue to work with this coalition that's behind me, and we're gonna try to put all of this together, and then we will market it to our residents here at the city of Los Angeles. Any other questions? Yes, that is a helicopter.
Are you not worried about moving forward? But this in LA happened last year, we put a clear majority of voters that they just weren't interested in it.
Well, you gotta look at what happened, and if Trinity was up here, I'm sure she could answer it better than me. We spent zero money and got almost 45% of the voters in this city. There have been constant conversations since then. So if I had to guess, I would say without pause, without pause, our numbers of support has grown. Now, what we want to do is come up with a detailed, comprehensive plan. We'll have conversations about that with the community, and we're all optimistic that the results then will be different. I don't want to hog. Any other questions?
Is LA City's a big day?
No, it's our day, all of us. Any other questions? Okay, thank you all for coming.
Thank you.
Demands the presence of traffic officers at the peak period. Primary duty of these officers is to facilitate the smooth flow of traffic. This means allowing many pedestrians and vehicles to use the streets in harmony without unnecessary delays or undesirable interruptions in movement. In the interest of public safety and as a means of regulating traffic movement, many parking signs, safety zones, and signals are installed. These engineering devices are by competent traffic engineers after careful studies, and if complied with, will aid the police in their work and traffic in its movement. Officers in parking and intersection control work regulate traffic at an intersection with the aid of mechanical devices to permit alternating traffic movements, thus minimizing the possibility of conflict and congestion. Other duties include school regulations and furnishing information to the public. Officers' alertness and willingness to oblige in this respect is responsible to a large degree for the public's appraisal of this branch of the police service. All important intersections in this area are manned by competent, well-trained, neat-appearing Whoops, well, almost all intersections. In an effort to better impress officers with the importance of proper personal appearance and intersection action, one of our experienced control officers has volunteered to show the most prevalent faults contracted by men in this type of work. Meet Tommy. He's our traffic man at Ninth and Hill. Let's watch Tommy work. Note the effortless ease with which he works his corner. As a matter of fact, he just ignores it. The guy's a walking library. What a frontman for a police department. And it's guys like this who leave the greatest impression on the public. Old friends, new friends, you meet them all on the friendly corner spot where Tommy works. This guy loves policemen. He used to work traffic in Upper Sandusky and talks by the hour with any policeman that will listen. Some traffic control, it's a good thing those signals are working. What's this? Tommy's going to work? Hey, that's dangerous. Get out of the way of those cars. If you signal them to come on through, you better get out of their way. Those armed signals look like a windmill. On every corner, there are some things that will bear watching. Oh, Tommy, be careful, your wife may be shopping today. There's that, where's the Sarge look? It must be time for a smoke. Notice how cleverly he does this. Notice how cleverly he does this. By carefully palming the cigarette and walking up and down like a pedestrian, he's barely noticed by more than 100 people. This takes practice, studying the manual with all that noise on the corner. Tommy hasn't picked a winner in two weeks, so he's taking to the turf manual for some hot tips. It's pretty close to lunch now. Tommy's getting hungry and mad. You fathead. Tommy, watch your blood pressure. That's dangerous on a hot day. Get a load of this. A stranger doesn't know where the federal building is. He'll find out where a phone book is. Hmm, how do you like that? Hey, Tommy, look now. Your corner's all balled up. Guy can't take his mind off business for a second. Ah, but don't worry about Tommy. He'll get this straightened out. This calls for some strategy. I thought so. Out with a no right. Oh, no, not a no left, too. He'll have things fixed, all right. Those guys will be driving around the block for hours trying to get to work. Now things are looking better. It's about time for a quick snack. That was a lot of work. Yes, sir, there he goes, heading for the coffee shop. One thing about Tommy, he's the thorough type. Goes all out on these signs. There comes another no right. That should really fix things up. Check this caution. That's sergeant's nerves. Comes from drinking too much coffee on duty. Let's take a look at the adjacent corners. Tommy's buddies are really busy. All their traffic, and now his, too. The indiscreet placing of control signs has caused vehicles to try turns here. The result? Traffic jammed up for blocks. Now let's see how it should be done. An alert, well-trained officer has his hands full at all times in regulating a busy downtown intersection. Signals should be given in a precise, clear-cut manner in accordance with the standard system as prescribed in your traffic manual. These arm signals should always be used. Never shout orders when working your corner. In this particular situation, the officer is working in especially busy, two-phase flow with a merging right turn, which automatically dictates his position in the intersection. Pedestrians and the particular traffic pattern will vary during the day, thus necessitating a change in the officer's position from time to time, even at the same intersection. Your position is important because you must act quickly to keep traffic moving. Don't permit pedestrians and autos to jockey back and forth in a Gaston and Alphonse act. Get one or the other through in a hurry. This is what we call flow regulation, and it's important. Remember, step in fast, make a decision, and carry it out. Cut off pedestrians and shoot cars through, thus eliminating a long line of traffic which will block up adjacent corners. The quality of your regulation will be quickly noticed and appreciated by many thousands of citizens. You must be prepared to answer every type of question: locations, buildings, streets, stores, and every street car run in L.A. When your answer will take time, escort the pedestrian to the curb where you can converse in safety. This is where you can sell your department 100% to the public. Your strict attention to all points in your intersection will develop the speed with which this officer detects and assists cars in their desired moves. The constant shifting and moving required may tire the inexperienced man. But this simple exercise of flexing the feet, calf, and thigh muscles will prove resting as well as allowing the proper posture at all times. Short, sharp, intermittent blasts of the whistle should be used to attract attention and to prevent violations. This is most valuable in preventing the inattentive, dreaming jaywalker from walking into the path of moving cars. Efficient regulation of traffic demands that a proper system of manual signals be employed to convey directions and orders to both drivers and pedestrians. Men assigned to the Parking and Intersection Control Division are given an opportunity to see actual intersection work being carried on by experienced officers. They are required to study various intersections and diagnose particular problems offered by varied traffic flow, pedestrians, or turning movements. This work demands the finest men obtainable physically as well as mentally. These officers are the department's representatives. They are constantly in the public view, and their actions predicate much of the public favor or disfavor as to the police system in Los Angeles.
The academy grounds contain target, combat, and shotgun ranges. The target line has a 25- and 50-yard line with electrically operated and hydraulically actuated target systems with 42 firing positions. The combat range is designed to simulate field shooting situations. It consists of 12 three-positioned targets which are electrically operated. A complete rheostat lighting system allows the operator to simulate lighting conditions. The shotgun range is electrically operated with 20 positions. The backstop is steel with concrete reinforcement, including a water trap to recover expended lead. Los Angeles policemen are required to perform safety checks and shoot a qualifying score on one of the three courses monthly. This assures that the individual officer acquires and maintains shooting skill and retains an excellent knowledge of firearm safety. The academy abounds with accommodations for all types of sports and outdoor activities. The Olympic-sized swimming pool is utilized year-round by policemen and is open during the summer months to their families. There are several picnic areas containing barbecue pits, tables, and benches. The grounds also contain a regulation tennis court, baseball field, and two handball courts. Basketball and volleyball can be played either in the indoor gymnasium or on an outdoor court. These athletic facilities assist the policemen to maintain excellent physical condition. The academy is devoted to the training of police officers as well as serving as a recreational center for policemen and their families. The Los Angeles Police Revolver and Athletic Club maintains the academy buildings and grounds and provides sports equipment for the many athletic events held on the premises. Funds are acquired from rental of the facilities for banquets and social activities. Additional revenue is derived from operation of the café, which serves 300,000 persons annually. The Training Division is comprised of three major sections. The Instruction Section is responsible for physical training and self-defense, general and law instruction, report writing, and proficiency in the use of firearms. The Coordination Section is responsible for recruit training, in-service, supervisory, police reserve, and specialized training. The Administration Section contains research and development, audiovisual instruction, training publications, supply and maintenance units. Recruit officer training covers a 20-week period. The first 12 weeks are at the academy and include the academic and physical portions of their training. The recruit is then assigned to one of the geographical police divisions for four weeks to gain practical field experience. He is closely supervised by a skilled training officer while in the field. The recruit officer then returns to the academy for the final four weeks of training. Upon completion of training, formal graduation ceremonies are held on the academy grounds, which includes formal inspection and congratulatory address by the chief of police. The first day at the academy suggests a definite need for improvement on the part of the recruit officer. A marked transition will occur in the 20 weeks which follow. Every officer will have obtained the minimum proficiency required in the necessary skills and will display both confidence and excellence when graduation day finally arrives. The initial requirement for the new officer is to acquire the captain uniforms which he will wear throughout his training. Other necessary equipment includes sweat clothes, brooks, and gun cleaning equipment. Recruit officers must attain minimum standards of performance in physical conditioning, shooting, and academic subjects during all phases of training. The minimum acceptable performance consists of two overman pull-ups, 10 push-ups, 25 sit-ups, and run a mile and a quarter in 12 minutes or less. A gradual conditioning program includes basic self-defense techniques to assist each officer in obtaining the skills which will enable him to confidently and capably perform the tasks which confront field officers daily. Actual application of the knowledge learned in different phases of training are tested in simulated field problems. This assists the recruit officer in relating classroom lectures to practical experience. Each field problem is graded and critiqued by an instructor and the actors assigned to the problem who are staff members. The problems presented represent many of the conditions which the officer will be confronted with during a field assignment. The problems include the issuance of a citation to an unruly motorist, the diplomatic and cautious arrest of a drunk citizen, and the correct procedure in handling a neighbor dispute. Every Los Angeles police officer is required to shoot a qualifying score on one of three courses monthly. Initial instructions are conducted on the 25-yard target range. The attainment of proficiency on this course entitles the officer to a monthly bonus of from $2 to $16, depending upon his score. The minimum qualifying score is 195 out of 300 points. The importance of mastering the combat range is emphasized by the Los Angeles Police Department's requirement that every officer below the rank of captain must shoot a minimum score on this course six months a year. Additional firearm destruction includes the safe use of the shotgun as well as qualifying on the shotgun range three times a year. Beginning classes of recruit officers range up to 100 men, depending upon the number certified to attend any particular training phase. Recruitment is nationwide and is a continuous process since new classes start each month. During the third week of training, recruits are issued their new uniforms to prepare for field assignments, which begin during their fifth week. Uniforms are inspected by supervisors for workmanship and proper fit. Members of the academy staff are assigned as class assistants, and they are available to assist the new officer with any personal problem which might arise while he is at the academy. An inspection is conducted daily to ensure that personal appearance and equipment is properly maintained. A formal flag-raising ceremony is held each morning at the conclusion of the uniform inspection. Finally, graduation day has arrived. A formal inspection is held on the athletic field, and the recruit officer's family and friends are invited to the academy to celebrate the completion of his training. The graduation ceremony is highlighted by a congratulatory address by the chief of police and the awarding of diplomas to each officer. They now display the outstanding qualities and demeanor that is expected of every Los Angeles police officer.